The meeting will now come to order. Mr. Hayes, would you lead us in the pledge tonight, please, sir?
Our pleasure to be here, citizens of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'd like to take this opportunity at this time to say welcome to our visitors. Are there any elected officials in the audience? If you would, please stand. I know Mr. Glover is here. All others? Thank you so very much.
Jill Speer.
And Jill Speer, thank you. Any others? Thank you so very much. And all of you are welcome, and we certainly appreciate your being here. Okay. At this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Libby if she would come forward. This is our introduction of our new highries.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and the distinguished board. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce to you Dr. Chaney Mosley. Do you want to come up, Dr. Mosley? Well, just so everyone can get a good look at you. Dr. Chaney Mosley is the Director of the Academies of Nashville, our college and career prep program in the district's 12 zoned high schools. He is succeeding Star Herman, whom, as you know, retired earlier this year. Oh, man, you have to be on camera. Stand who's standing here. Sorry.
You've got to get used to it, sir.
Dr. Mosley began his educational career as an agricultural teacher for schools in Tennessee and Georgia, including Hendersonville High School, Cascade, and Temple High Schools. He transitioned into higher education and worked as a graduate teaching assistant at Virginia Tech. In 2011, Dr. Mosley joined the Tennessee Department of Education, where he served as a career and technical education consultant for a year before taking his current position. Dr. Mosley has both his bachelor's and master's degrees from Middle Tennessee State University. He earned the Specialist in Education distinction from the University of West Georgia and a doctorate in education from Virginia Tech. Dr. Mosley served in the United States Army Reserves 4203 USAH, United States Army Hospital, and served two tours of duty in Iraq. He was honorably discharged with the rank of Staff Sergeant, and it is our pleasure to welcome Dr. Mosley to Metro Schools.
Thank you.
This evening, we also introduce our long-awaited Director of the Music Makes Us Education Program. After a nationwide search, Metro Nashville Public Schools selected Lori Shell, who has 25 years' experience as an arts education advocate and leader. She joins Metro Schools from California, where she served as the Executive Director of the California Alliance for Arts Education, which is a statewide policy and advocacy organization. She garnered a national reputation for innovative, effective leadership for her role in securing $105 million for ongoing state funding for arts education for all 6 million California students in 2006. She holds a Bachelor of Arts in Psychology from Stanford University and a Master of Arts in Liberal Studies and Dance from Wesleyan University. So we are very pleased to welcome Lori Shell as our Director of the Music Makes Us Education Program.
Thank you, Ms. Libby, and we want to say from the board, welcome to our new members of our staff. We know that our schools will be better served because you are here and a part of what's going on. Thank you. Awards and recognitions.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, members of the Board, members of the audience. It is definitely my honor to recognize our outgoing Board members tonight. I've served as Superintendent with many Boards, with many Board members over the years, quite a number of years, and I want to say personally that this Board is distinguished. The members have served with honesty and integrity, with professionalism, and with dignity, even when they disagree. And the thing that I would like for the viewing audience and the audience here to know, that this is a diverse Board, but it is a highly professional Board and a highly effective Board, and it's been my real pleasure to work with you over these past three and a half years for me, a little bit longer for you. I want to thank each of you for your many contributions to this district, but most importantly, to the 80,000 children that we serve in this district and this community. So collectively, please join me in recognizing our outgoing members of the Board and for their years of service. And I'll call each of you up. We have a small gift for each of you who are outgoing, and first, I'd like to start with Kay Simmons. Kay, if you would come up, please. Kay has served in District 9. This is heavy. Kay served as representative in District 9. She was appointed to the Board by the Council in July of 2009 and then elected in 2010 to complete Allen Coverstone's term. She served as Chair of Governance, Capital Needs, and served as a member of the Parks Board, where she was a member of the Subcommittee that hired the new Parks and Recreation Director. She has requested advanced academic reports as a part of the administration's regular reporting schedule, and we're glad to be doing the high school report tonight for you, Kay, at your last meeting. I think you'll find it very enjoyable. So Kay, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Now, what could we say about Ed?
A whole lot.
A whole lot, and there are a few secrets that we ought to keep, probably. Ed Kendall has served in District 7 and District 1. He was appointed to the Board in 1985 to complete Dorothy Guttin's term. He's served as a member of the Board for 27 years. He's served as Chair, Vice Chair of the Board, has served as Chair, I think, of nearly every committee. There may be some old ones that you didn't get, but I think we think all of them. He lives little doubt where he stands on an issue. An independent of the Board, he is an active participant in the community which he serves. We know, Ed, that we have not heard the last from you.
It's only about 20 feet from my seat to the podium.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. We wish you the best. Mark is currently Vice Chair of the Board. He was appointed by the Council in 2007 and elected in 2008 to complete Pam Garrett Tidwell's term in office. He's served as Vice Chair, Chair of Governance, Chair of the Student Assignment Task Force, Chair of Class, our urban school systems in Tennessee. He is a great pundit of T-VAS, value-added data. He's a sports nut and a famed storyteller, and Mark, you've got to share a story with us every now and then. You can't just leave without sharing a story. And I want to say, without joking, that Mark's the guy who put everything on the line for this zoning plan. He is truly an expert and has dedicated hundreds of hours to that work. So, Mark, thank you for your work and your reading. Gracie Porter has represented District 5. Gracie was elected in 2006 to complete the term vacated by Reverend Lisa Hunt. She was then re-elected in 2008. She served as Chair of the Board, member of the Charter Review Committee, National School Boards Association Representative, Cube Steering Committee Member, Tennessee School Boards Association Board of Directors. She attained Level 3 Certification Boardsmanship credential, which is very impressive for a short period of time. It takes people 20 or 25 years to get that credit typically in Tennessee, and there's no question that she is a champion for children. So, Gracie, we have two things for you. This first. And we have your outgoing gavel. Now, I'm not sure, but I think most of our new Board members are in the audience, and I will introduce them at this point in time, and we'll just ask you to stand. Sharon Gentry has been re-elected, so Sharon, you've got to stand up. Congratulations on your reelection to District 1. Jill Speer. I've seen Jill. Jill Speer, District 3. Jill, welcome. Alisa Kim. I have not seen Alisa. Yes, there she is. Thank you very much. Alisa's in District 5. Will Pinkson in District 7. There's Will. And in District 9, Amy Froe. Thank you very much. For the new Board members, we welcome you. You've got big shoes to fill, but we have a bright future ahead of us. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Dr. Register, and as you come back, I would just like to make just a quick comment in saying that...
Madam Chair, before you do, may I say one thing?
Yes, ma'am.
It has been my absolute pleasure to serve on this Board with Ms. Simmons, Mr. Kendall, Mr. North, and yourself. I don't think, as a new Board member two years ago, that I would have been able to make it through without your guidance and your input, and I thank you all for the service that you've provided. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate it. And thanks to all of you. And now, we've got a Board meeting to do. Okay. United Way, I believe, has a presentation at this time.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Register, we are here to congratulate you on an outstanding MNPS employee-giving campaign. Once again, you all have done an outstanding job. It's all about leadership. It's all about partnership. We greatly appreciate both, and for that, we are presenting you with United Way's Pillar Award for this year.
Thank you very much.
So, congratulations and thank you.
You also get two things. Unexpected second. So, the Board should know that during the first week of May, there was a global conference here with about 3,000 folks from literally around the world. We had asked Dr. Register if he would come and be one of the main presenters at a panel to a very austere group of philanthropists who travel the world looking for high-level examples of change and inspiration, and they had asked us if we would gather a panel around education, and Dr. Register graciously agreed. So, with that, one of the things that happened there was Dr. Register got an opportunity to take a photo with a very noteworthy Tennessean that we hope you will note and hang this proudly in your office. This is...
You better play...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Get all your stuff.
I got it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a special place for the picture.
Wow, I don't know how we can top that one, Dr. Register. Thank you so very much. The Board will hear from those persons who have requested to appear at this Board meeting. In the interest of time, speakers are requested to limit remarks to three minutes or less, and comments will be timed. Your names will scroll on the screen, and we ask that you line up according to what you see on the screen here, and as soon as the last person, which will be Karen Meredith, will ask in the next group if you would follow. Thank you so very much. And if you would, when you come to the podium, please say your name and go on with your three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Register. I felt it was appropriate, two years ago, I sat at the table, and it was my last meeting, and I felt it appropriate tonight to come and tell you the difficult work you've done over the last two years, the way that you've attacked the work that you've done over the last two years, the improved scoring of grades, the improved scoring of tests. And sitting at that table is a very difficult job. You get a lot of pressure from all different directions, be it the Council, be it the Mayor's Office, be it the Governor's Office, be it the State Legislature, and it makes it a very challenging job to sit at that table. But you've done it excellent. You've done a phenomenal job. You've got a great Director, and you've done tremendous work. And so, I just wanted to come and tell you thank you for the work you've done, for continuing to move our schools forward, for making it your priority in your life, because I know you have, and for being great servants to the City of Nashville. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am Chris Moth, and I have two kids in our public schools. Mayor Dean wrote the word "quality" five times in his letter supporting Great Hearts. I'm zoned for Hillsborough High, where kids in the IB and STEM program routinely achieve ACT scores in the 30s. Isn't that quality? Yes. Hillsborough's ACT average is about, well, average, but that's what you'd expect from a good school that serves diverse students. In their state appeal, Great Hearts gave a different definition of quality, and they pointed to Hume-Fog, where students score an ACT average of 26. But they're touting Hume-Fog as quality is empty. Everyone knows that when you segregate out kids by ability or economic circumstances, the average ACT score of the remaining group will soar upward. How can Great Hearts call Hume-Fog higher quality when IB diploma seekers at Hillsborough attain the same solid ACT scores? Mayor Dean understands the reality, that affluent parents demand choices, and they seek comfort in our economically segregated private schools and Hume-Fog. Indeed, a third of the slots at Hume-Fog are grabbed by Hillsborough and Hillwood families. Many more families are frustrated by the lottery and understandably cry out for Great Hearts. In Gary Nixon's approval of Great Hearts, he is telling us that we should hear their cries and that we must provide more economically segregated quality schools. However, the election results suggest that Nashville citizens may not be quite lined up behind Nixon and success pact just yet. $25 million bucks a year is a lot of money, and you must be sure of your vision for all our schools before you commit our dollars to Arizona. You see, Great Hearts offers nothing that we can't build ourselves overnight. If our vision is to bring in more families from private schools like the mayor wants, all we need to do is halt bus service to Hillsborough and Hillwood. That's the first obvious step to make our zoned schools more like Hume-Fog. Though Governor Haslam's Board demands that we accept Great Hearts, we cannot possibly accept the annual bill until he shares his quality vision for all our school system. I hope your vision for Nashville is to continue the hard work of adding quality to our integrated zoned schools. Increased flight of affluent families is the wrong direction under that vision. You must reject Great Hearts. But alternately, if your vision is to embrace the quality being demanded by the Governor, then we must delay Great Hearts until we work out a segregation plan for our affected zoned schools. The people of Nashville have heard caution at the voting booth, and you must honor them. Table Great Hearts. Do it unanimously. Let the new elected Board hear this business. Thanks for listening.
Hi, my name is Sophie Patton, and I'm a sophomore at Hillsborough High School in the IB Academy. I have been in public school my whole life, going from Julia Green to JT Moore and now at Hillsborough. Recently, all of the talk about Great Hearts has caught my attention. It really bothers me hearing negative things about my high school. I know of many families that will not consider public school for their children. I wonder how many of these families have actually visited public schools or if they're just listening to rumors. I am often asked why my parents do not have me in private school. However, I believe my parents made the best decisions by sending me to public schools. Never once in the hallways of JT Moore or Hillsborough have I ever felt unsafe. Perhaps some people are just uncomfortable being around others that don't look like them. I have many friends that look differently from me. The diversity in public schools has opened my eyes to many different types of people and has taught me tolerance and understanding of others. I have countless friends at Hillsborough that have transferred from magnet or private schools that feel as if they're getting just as good of an education at Hillsborough and are genuinely enjoying their high school experience more than they did at their previous high school. Each and every one of the students at Hillsborough comes from different socioeconomic classes and a wide variety of backgrounds. Going to public school has honestly been such an amazing experience for me. In closing, I truly appreciate my principal, my teachers, my coaches, and my fellow classmates, and I'm proud to say that I'm a Hillsborough Borough.
Thank you. The next person, please take the podium.
Good evening, and some distinguished guests that we have here. My name is Peter Kamek, and my son attends Hume-Fog. So, anyway, a pretty simple request. With the change in the scheduling and the days kids go back to school and what days have off, I'm just kind of requesting that maybe you can find a way to add the two days during Thanksgiving, Monday and Tuesday, so they can have a full week off, and it would be a lot easier when people have to go travel quite a distance to go out of town and either air travel to visit family and friends. Even though they have Wednesday through Sunday, the travel time takes a lot of that time out, so you kind of don't get a lot of time to spend with the family and friends. So, it seems that a lot of days are being added at Christmas time. They go back January 7th this year. To me, it would be just, you know, after New Year's, you have a day or two off after that and use the other two days and add it on to the Thanksgiving and take a week off. So, it would be a lot easier, a lot less expensive. Air travel at that time is, for a family of one, costs at least $1,200 to $1,300 for three days to see people. So, that's just my request. That's all I have. So, I hope you consider it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Karen Meredith, and I'm a proud Metro Nashville Public School parent and a proud supporter of Metro Nashville Public Schools. Today is an exciting day for Nashville and Nashville schools. Our acceptance of Great Hearts Academies today is a perfect example of how we can work together and continue to make Davidson County schools better every day. We are really at an exciting turning point when we are adding more high-quality seats to educate our children. I'm happy that we are welcoming proven and successful charter schools like Great Hearts Academies to our public school landscape. There are so many families who are thrilled to have this classical liberal arts education, not just for their children, but for any child who is interested. Great Hearts is a public school in every sense of the word. It will be supported by families from all socioeconomic backgrounds, from all different neighborhoods, from all walks of life throughout Nashville. Our family will apply for Great Hearts in 2014 because we are looking for a public school with an excellent, rigorous curriculum for our children, and if we're lucky, we will make it through the random lottery, as I'm betting that demand will greatly exceed capacity for Great Hearts. So many families like mine desperately want to stay in the public schools and to stay in Davidson County. Adding options like Great Hearts ensure that more and more families do just that, stay in public schools. Great Hearts, starting in 2014, will be just one of many solutions to raising the bar of excellence in Nashville schools. Today is truly an exciting day for Nashville schools.
Ms. Garner? If the others would please line up, it would expedite us calling you to the podium. And as the last person, please, the name that you see on the screen, I ask that you line up at that time. Thank you.
Vanessa? No, I think...
Who's the next person?
Vanessa. I have several people after Karen, and then this was the next.
Is Vanessa Garner?
Yes, I am.
Ms. Garner?
Yes, I thank you. I am here with continued support for Great Hearts Academies and am excited for all students of Nashville and for our school district. I'm a parent of a Julia Green student, and will have another incoming student in the next year, and I am excited for this opportunity, not just for my own children as a possibility, but for all of the students within MNPS. This is an exciting time for us, and I look forward to seeing what happens for Great Hearts and also for all of the schools in MNPS. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi there. My name's Holly Colte. I'm in the Julia Green School District. And here we are again tonight, still discussing the same Great Hearts issue. And throughout this whole process, I have realized the one thing that we really have not been focusing on, and that is the Great Hearts student. That's who we need to be listening to, and not as much the parents and the faculty and the elected officials. But in my world of marketing, customer is always king, and for a minute, I just want us to all play on the same team and open our ears to what a few of these Great Hearts students are saying. One student writes of the college opportunities that have opened up. "Great Hearts is a fantastic school. I'm a high school student here and am in several clubs. Love the music and art programs. Plus, I participate in the sport every season. The school isn't huge, but most of us like that. The school college counselor is awesome, and I've done some research into college choices and requirements, and have found that Great Hearts has more than prepared me for what is needed. Some friends that graduated from another Great Hearts school have said that college is easy for them because of the education they received in high school. That was great to hear, and with classes like Latin and human letters, I have even more college options." Another student writes of the welcoming, respectful learning environment fostered by the faculty. "I'm a junior at Great Hearts, and I couldn't love it more. Most people would say that high school is a time for feeling insecure and never fitting in. However, I've never felt more loved and respected in my entire life. The rules, that may seem old-fashioned, teach us to respect our teachers and classmates and to create an environment where all can easily speak their minds. The staff is incredibly bright, but also can easily relay information to the students. They're not only my mentors, but also my friends. They make me want to go to school each day and see what more I can learn about the world. The group of teachers and friends that I've been with for seven hours every day have made me the person I am today. I can't say I haven't worked long nights, but it's definitely worth the work. I've realized that Great Hearts is unlike any other school, where kids can grow in an environment free from fear because all people are welcome. The academic and development track records have been set. Our community is hungry for this school." And I urge you tonight in this discussion to please vote your final yes, and let's push this car out of the mud and prepare for a ride to take Nashville to the top of a hill that this city has never seen before. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Shelley Baldwin. I have two children that attend Sylvan Park Bodega. Both are in Acceptual Education Program. Rosie, my oldest, has autism and intellectual disability and a praxia of speech and has been enrolled in general education classes since kindergarten, thanks to full inclusion. Ally is now core as an advanced learner. At home and at school, we have witnessed the value of learning alongside peers who think, process, and learn differently. The diversity at Sylvan Park has resulted in incredible advancements for Rosie. Ally has also benefited from learning in an environment that reflects our society with people of differing abilities, skill sets, and income levels. I believe opening Great Hearts will alter that balance and jeopardize the success at Sylvan Park. I don't think it's a coincidence that they chose White Bridge as their first potential location. A company that buys charter school property is looking at Freewill Baptist Campus, which lies right in the middle of neighborhoods whose median house sales are at $340,000. After Great Hearts exhaustive search on White Bridge Road, surely that will be their only solution. West Nashville will be the equivalent of their Scottsdale school, where the houses go... The diversity at Sylvan Park has resulted in incredible advancements for Rosie. Ally has also benefited from learning in an environment that reflects our society with people of differing abilities, skill sets, and income levels. I believe opening Great Hearts will alter that balance and jeopardize the success at Sylvan Park. I don't think it's a coincidence that they chose White Bridge as their first potential location. A company that buys charter school property is looking at Free Will Baptist Campus, which lies right in the middle of neighborhoods whose median house sales are at $340,000. After Great Hearts exhaustive search on White Bridge Road, surely that will be their only solution. West Nashville will be the equivalent of their Scottsdale School, where the houses go for 325 grand. Scottsdale's upper and lower schools met their goal of 66% parent participation in the investment drive. Collectively, they raised $590,000 with an average donation of 1,500. And in combined tax credit, you have $785,000 for 1,000, I'm sorry, 1,050 kids that are enrolled. Of those kids, 342 came from traditional public schools. So, we can plan on losing a third of our kids to Great Hearts. With their refusal to allocate slots for free reduced lunch students or to provide adequate transportation, you can count on immediate neighborhood children or those with the means to travel across town to fill the slots, effectively creating a private public school. With the student body coming from overall higher learning families with resources of time and money, their fundraising will rival Scottsdale's. They will reap the benefits of smaller class sizes and access to cutting-edge technology. They will churn out impressive test scores and college acceptance numbers. The cream of the crop will rise to the top. Great Hearts claims to want to provide educational opportunities for kids in need. If you look at our recent school board race, you will see it's an opportunity for profit, not for education. A District 9 candidate raised over $100,000. Eighty-seven percent of those funds came from outside of that district, and only 5% of the money was from potential metro families. $18,000 came from a special interest packs who are pro-Great Hearts and other charters like them. Sylvan Park Bodega is 63% white, 30% black, and the entire student body, 44% are free and reduced lunch. We have 12% special needs and 17% kids in encore. Great Hearts will pull out 30%, with the majority of them probably not being the free and reduced lunch children. Doing so will remove a large percentage of the children that serve as behavior role models and academic inspiration for the kids who come from non-supportive environments or kids like my Rosie.
Thank you so much. Baldwin?
Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, my name is Carol Ballinger, and I am an MNPS parent as well as a product of this school system. I am here tonight to affirm you in the work that you are doing and to ask that you keep us moving in the right direction. Difficult work lies ahead. The events surrounding the Great Hearts Charter School application are utterly fascinating. Public discourse has been lively and emotions have run high. A small but vocal group of parents from the west side of town insisted that our city needs this school here and now. Our school's Office of Innovation performed exhaustive due diligence and determined that the Great Hearts application fell short of the target. As a result, the electing board has voted, not once, but twice, to deny the application. The fact that the first vote was unanimous and the second vote was a supermajority mattered not. Sadly, the appointed State Board of Education crammed down its political agenda. Given that Tennessee is a strong red state, I ask, what has become of the Republican Party value of limited government intervention and decentralized decision-making? How did a board appointed by the governor make such a heavy-handed decision? Charter schools are not evil, and I recognize that they are part of the current landscape. Although I am personally a big proponent of quality zoned schools, it is unrealistic to think that zoned schools can do the whole job in a district this size. There's inherent value in the autonomy and flexibility afforded charter schools. However, we must be very careful lest we wind up with three dozen charter schools slicing and dicing our city's student population into specialty schools that yield no better results than we currently have. Diane Ravitch recently took Michelle Reed to task for her continual bashing of our public schools system. Ravitch blogged, quote, "Our public schools educate 90% of the population, and we should give the public schools some of the credit for our nation's accomplishments as the largest economy and the greatest engine of technological innovation in the world," unquote. She then went on to state that the test scores for American students are at their highest point in history as measured by the National Assessment of Educational Progress. The explanation she offered for our low international rankings can be found in the fact that U.S. is number one in childhood poverty. Simple answers to complex problems do not exist.
Thank you. Price? Anne Price?
Hi, my name is Anne.
If the others, excuse me, but if the others would please come up so we can expedite time.
My name is Anne Price, and I am also an MNPS parent. I have two daughters, one at Julia Green Elementary and one at J.T. Moore Middle School. And we enjoy the diverse environment at those schools, and we definitely wanted a diverse student body for our children. I know that Great Hearts Academies is excited to partner with the district to offer a new high-quality school option for metro students. My husband and I are also excited about the possibility that one or both of our daughters may one day attend a Great Hearts Academy school. We are very impressed by their classical liberal arts curriculum and program. They also have an outstanding record of academic success. We know that Great Hearts wants to serve a diverse student population from all over the city. We believe that a Great Hearts school here in Nashville has the potential to have a diverse student body due to the open lottery and location. We hope that you will approve the Great Hearts application today because Nashville needs to seize this great opportunity.
Metro School Board, stand your ground on diversity that you have tried to get the school system to reflect. Stand your ground.
Would you state your name, sir?
Kwame Lilith.
Thank you.
Begin a debate on setting a hard law on who sits on this board based on campaign finance limits. Unless you set limits, the next set of elections will have candidates raising $300,000. Set those limits and enforce them. Enforce a conflict of interest law. If Elise Kim is a paid consultant for a firm that you're dealing with, give her a choice to take her seat on this board or resign from her job. Do not accept bullying from the Tennessee Department of Education. If you won't accept bullying inside the schools, don't accept bullying outside. Do not allow the Golden Rule to continue to run this system, the Chamber of Commerce. That is, those who have the gold make all the rules. Approve charters that close the educational gap, that close the ethnic gaps, that closes the income gaps. Do not approve charters that do not do that. Reject Great Hearts' hidden agenda, which is really great hate. Why would you allow a school from Arizona, from a state that never approved the celebration of keen celebration till recently? That's a state we don't want to model after. Great Hearts will accept low-income students for a little while, throw them out, and then keep the $11,000 per child that that child brings from the state. Great Hearts has a thing called locational diversity. That is a euphemism for 21st century Jim Crow. Great Hearts, stay in the West with your mess. Our city is great. It's too great to hate. We celebrate MLK. No tax dollars for disguised lily-white academies from Arizona. The club will not go backwards forward ever, backward never.
Matt D. Walker? Mr. Walker? Terry Patton? Hey.
Reverend Fuzz?
Reverend Fuzz, you're up.
Madam Chairman, thank you, and congratulations for your years of service and how you've cared about children, how you've helped children, to our friend Ed Kendall and my representative, Ms. Gentry, and to this board. I come today because, you know, I have some here at the school board, I take great pride in having many friends who are at the helm of educating our children. I've had one person sometimes say to me, you know, I don't see color. Not one, but many of my friends who want maybe to impress me or to let me know that they don't care about black or white. They'll say to me, I don't see color, and we need to live in a color-blind society. And I would always say to them, I need to get you some glasses. Diversity is one of the great goods in our world. And Nashville have, I'm from Germantown outside of Memphis, and I was proud to be from Germantown. Went to Germantown High School and was one, was probably the first African-American Student Council Vice President. And back in the '70s, we were working on race relations and diversity. And I felt somewhat embarrassed and put aside that this evening I would come here or be asked to come here to still talk about how do we ensure diversity, to make sure that, to put in a word to say diversity is not just the greater good, it's the greatest good. A few years ago, Dr. J., when I was president of IMF, I'd lost my voice, and we were in a meeting talking about public education. And whether you believe this or not, I mean, you've got to believe it because today I sat between Ed Kendall's brother and Ross Buer, so I think this is possible. I heard this voice that said, "Enoch, when you get well, help the little children in school. Fight for them." And I don't want to come to any meetings ever again to be against something. I'm here today to be for these little children. There are 70 school-aged children who attend my congregation. On Sundays, they go into children's church. On Wednesdays, they come to work on their homework and their academic enrichment. I care about them and really love them. I cannot believe that we will be a city that does not love its children. A school that is not diverse does not love its children. A school district that is not affirmatively diverse. A mayor's office, a mayor's plan, what does that mean?
Your time's up, sir. I'm sorry.
I'm Baptist.
And I do well understand.
A system that doesn't care about being diverse, really doesn't love our children. Love will find a way to do the greatest good, not the greater good, the greatest. Love will find a way. Let's find a way to do the greater good. And thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your years, Ms. Porter, Ed. Thank you. Sharon, and all of you. Dr. J., God bless y'all.
Thank you. Mr. Tucker?
Hello, my name is Ross Buer. I'm here on behalf of Great Hearts, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you here today. First and foremost, Great Hearts respectfully request that you approve Great Hearts amended application pursuant to the instructions of the State Board of Education. Great Hearts looks forward to working with MNPS to propose a charter that complies with the State Board's instructions to Metro. Great Hearts does realize that there have been concerns, and as you know, the State Board thoroughly considered those concerns using a multi-step appeal process. First, they reviewed voluminous documents, including Metro's own file on Great Hearts, the application materials, and a sufficient number of documents, extensive number of documents provided by Metro and by Great Hearts. There was a one-hour-plus public hearing before the State Board Hearing Officer in which both sides were given equal time to present the, anything that they wanted to. Then there was a detailed 11-page report of findings and recommendations by the State Board Hearing Officer, Dr. Gary Nixon. And as a result of that, the bipartisan State Board of Education unanimously approved and overturned the prior denial and sent this back for us, for you here today. Great Hearts is hopeful that any concerns that may have existed have been addressed by that extensive detailed fact finding by the State Board. In particular, the Board's findings included that the Charter Review Committee, Metro's Charter Review Committee, that had seven Metro officials plus two outside experts, found after an extensive review that is, that Metro has acknowledged is one of the best processes out there, found that Great Hearts met the standard in every single category that was scored. Second, it found that the Charter Review Committee unanimously recommended to this Board that you approve Great Hearts' application. And we realize there may have been some misunderstanding about what the Charter Review Committee's findings were and recommendation, but it was unanimous for approval. The Charter Review Committee also stated that, and I quote, "The applicant has articulated and outlined detailed plans to promote diversity and equitable access to school options." And again, that was in voting that they'd met the standard in that category as well. And they found that Great Hearts' transportation plan exceeds what Metro does for students in its own schools of choice. Metro, I mean, excuse me, Great Hearts is hopeful these findings resolve any concerns that still exist. And as stated in a letter I provided to you all, I request the opportunity, if there are further statements after the public comment period, that I be given a chance to speak to them, as I didn't have the opportunity to do that afterwards. Last, I would like to very briefly read a statement from Great Hearts CEO. Dear MNPS School Board Members.
Your time is up, sir.
Again, if there are more comments, I request the opportunity to address them. They have equal time. Thank you.
Mr. Morrison?
Thank you, members of the Board. Really appreciate the time to be able to speak today. I'm going to read this on behalf of Mr. Buer.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Board is in session, and we ask that you honor the speaker. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Theo Morrison, and I'm a nice guy. So, I'm going to read the letter from Great Hearts, and it says, "To the MNPS Board of Education, dear MNPS School Board Members, we know our application has been an issue of some contention and debate for the district and community. We think it is thus important to express as fellow educators our desire to work alongside you and with you for the greater good of Nashville. Great Hearts looks forward to collaborating with the Metro Nashville District and will work hard to become part of the portfolio of excellent schools within MNPS. We are committed to a growth plan that will serve many families across Nashville and an open enrollment model that will also bring liberal arts, college prep education to all communities and children of all backgrounds. Over the next months, as we work to open our first school, we hope to model what we seek in our students, a relentless desire to learn combined with a long-term perspective and all governed with respect and virtue. Sincerely, Dr. Daniel Scoggan, CEO, Great Hearts Academies." And with the time, the rest of my time here, I want to just state that I am a parent, well, first of all, I'm a product of the Metro Public School System. Graduated from Hillsborough High School, also attended Hume Fog, so I understand the transportation issues. So, I've taken the school, the school bus, I've taken the MTA bus to school, so I understand how to do that. It was just, the main thing was my parents wanted the best for me. I grew up in a community that now has a very trendy name called 12th South. It's a very tiny house. I grew up there and loved my experience there. My parents wanted the best for me, and they sent me to the best schools that they could. And I want to do the same for my children. I have a child at Sylvan Park and also have a child at St. George's, and I hope that I can send my children to Great Hearts or at least have the opportunity. And so, that's the thing. We need options, and you all have done a great job in providing options to students, but Great Hearts would serve as another option and serve as a complement to the already great choices that we have here in Nashville. And one other thing, Ms. Hawkins brought up some very, did some very wonderful homework, brought up some great statistics, and those are, you can use statistics in different ways. You can use them any way that you want. And in this case, you should look at those statistics when you're thinking about Great Hearts and whether or not you want those dollars. Hearts and whether or not you want those dollars to go into another county. Because there are other options out there. And it'd be best if we could keep our options here and keep students here in Nashville. Thank you.
Consent agenda, Mr. North.
The consent agenda.
Madam Chair.
No, sir. You're out of order, sir.
Could I speak for three members?
No, sir. Not at this point. This is board meetings, not public participation.
You should put it on your website. I was all over that website.
No, sir.
And I didn't see it, and it's a different policy than you used to have.
Sir, thank you. Mr. North, may you proceed.
The consent agenda. A, approval of minutes, July 10, 2012, regular meeting, and July 18, 2012, special meeting. B, recommended approval of lease for boys' prep charter schools use of the Dalewood Building. C, awarding of contracts. One, Amaranth Designs LLC. Two, Card Integrators Corporation. Three, Expeditionary Learning. Four, FileMaker Incorporated. Five, Diane Profit. Six, Halton Mifflin Harcourt. Seven, Southern Regional Education Board, SREB. Eight, Vanderbilt University. Nine, Collaborative for Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning Castle Agreement Grant. D, recommended approval of GP-8E, Annual Agenda Planning Policy, second reading. E, recommended approval of textbook adoption, IB Business Management, Learning About Dance and Ballet Basics. F, recommended approval of lease for the Academy at Hickory Hollow. G, recommended approval of requests for compulsory attendance waiver. Madam Chair, that completes the consent agenda.
Do we have a motion?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as read.
Do we have a second? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
No opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. North. Number two, performance of high schools. TGL report. PLG, excuse me.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, members of the audience, I'll ask Associate Superintendent Jay Steele to begin the presentation, and this is our annual report. We are a meeting behind, I think, on this regularly scheduled report, and we look forward to presenting that to you now. Jay, we'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you. My co-chair, Jeff Yarborough, is on his way. We thought we would be a little bit after six, so he's cutting it close. So I'm gonna go ahead and start. There's been a lot of talk in the last few months about high schools, and I want to share some facts with you about our schools and also ask you to think to yourselves, when's the last time you've been in one of our high schools? So did you know that we have 27 high schools in this district, something for every kid in this district? 12 Zone, four Magnet, one Virtual, the first Virtual School in the state of Tennessee, one eight-through-ten school that opened this year, three non-traditional, Old Cockrell, Hickory Hollow, and Opry Mills. Middle College, which is producing kids with full diplomas from Nashville State Community College, high school diplomas and college diplomas. Big Picture High School, two alternative learning centers, one adult school, and a Transitions. So 27 high schools in this district. McGavick High School, I know it's a little hard to read. McGavick High School has two National Model Academies, has 10 AP courses, three naming rights sponsors, country music television, Gaylord, U.S. Community Credit Union, a student-led credit union on site. TV students have won Emmys for the past three years, has the highest value-added scores for high schools in metropolitan Nashville public schools. Antioch has one nationally accredited academy, one with naming rights with Tennessee, the Tennessee Credit Union, has a student-owned credit union on site, has 10 AP courses. Glencliff with one national accredited academy with eight AP courses, has over 44 language enter United Nations representing those countries, has one naming rights sponsor with the Ford Motor Company. Kane Ridge, 11 partners in architecture and construction, and this year is implementing a teen court run by the students. Maplewood, 1.4 million in scholarships, freshman college savings program with Fifth Third Bank where every ninth grader opens an account to start saving for college. White's Creek is the only alternative energy school in the entire state of Tennessee where this curriculum didn't exist until we opened it two years ago. Over 1.6 million in scholarships. Hillwood has 22 AP courses. Most people don't realize that. Three National Model Accredited Academies, the first school in the entire state of Tennessee to get this designation. A 21st Century Media Center that was just unveiled last week with Dr. Register and the mayor and the Nashville Public Library System with a $500,000 gift from the community. Hillsborough has the first IB continuum in the state of Tennessee. Hunter's Lane had the first IB program in the state of Tennessee. Vanderbilt professors and PhD graduate students in the science classrooms delivering curriculum and writing curriculum, has two visiting teachers from China, and offers a K-12 Chinese continuum throughout the cluster. Stratford offers a K-12 STEM continuum, Vanderbilt professors and PhD graduate students in the classrooms there. And I visited it this morning, and it was beautiful what's happening in that school. Overton, 12 AP courses, 116 credits earned in dual enrollment, and over 50 students earning credit in dual enrollment with Nashville State Community College, being paid for by Deloitte. Over 40 languages spoken in the schools, the most EL students at any school in Tennessee. Most people don't know that about Overton. We opened the Cone School this year, which is a school eight-through-ten in the Cone Building for overage, undercredit students, anticipating 125 students. A waiting list is quickly developing to get into that school. MNPS Virtual School, over 400 part-time and 100 full-time students with three new AP courses offered this year. It is Tennessee's first Virtual School. Most people don't realize that. It's not the one that keeps advertising on television. Middle College, students earn associate degrees there two weeks before they graduate high school. That's amazing. And we had four of them that did it this past year and more in the pipeline. But most, all of them are coming out with college credit. Old Cockrell is a National Alternative Education Association School of Distinction, the top in the country. We are reopening Opry Mills this year with the Simon Youth Foundation partnership, and Simon Youth is going to sponsor all three of them, Old Cockrell, Hickory Hollow, and Opry Mills. Hume-Fog is a blue-ribbon model school. As I told you, Hunter's Lane was first, Tennessee's first IB school, and over 78 of the seniors there were accepted to colleges of their choice. And that's important. Not their second choice, their first choice. East Nashville Magnet School is a Padilla Magnet, and we're building a K-12 Padilla continuum. Primetime TV programs for the five academies starting in September. Again, we will be on Channel 10, Hillsborough, Kane Ridge, Pearl Cone, Hillwood, and McGavick. Content created by our kids will be airing at 5 o'clock on Channel 10, starting in September. At this time, that's just a little bit of the facts from our schools. There's much more, and I invite all of you to go visit our schools and see firsthand what's happening instead of listening to the rumors and things that are said about the schools. These schools have transformed over these last three years, and our next VIP tour is going to be in Hillwood in September. It's at 10:00 AM. I'll get you the date on that.
September the 7th.
September the 7th, 10:00 AM. You're invited to be part of that because you'll truly be amazed of what's happening in these schools. So at this time, I'll introduce Lori Schell to talk to you about Music Makes Us and what's happening in our schools with this program.
Thank you, Jay. Music Makes Us is a broad-based initiative that focuses on enhancing the traditional music curriculum and adding a contemporary music track that uses new technologies and reflects a diverse musical landscape, ultimately reaching all students in metro public schools. Music Makes Us pledges to make Nashville the worldwide leader in music education. The initiative is a public-private partnership among Metro-Nashville Public Schools, Nashville Mayor Carl Dean, Music City Music Council, the music industry, education, and nonprofit leaders in Nashville. Believing that music education is an essential component in a well-rounded education, Music Makes Us is committed to bringing the resources of the Nashville music community together to enable participation and to foster student success for every student at every level. The information you see here on this slide reflects the pilot contemporary music pathways that have been launched in five schools last week on August 1st and seven of the feeder middle schools. So at Glencliff High School, mariachi. At Overton High, global rhythms, world percussion. At McGavick, beginning guitar and country bluegrass. At Hillwood, beginning guitar and rock ensemble. And at Pearl Cone, songwriting and a student-run recording music label and recording studio. These classes are taught by professional musicians hired specifically to teach these classes. And enrollment is encouraged among students who are not currently participating in our existing music classes. We're all thrilled and excited about this program, and this is just the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. And I would be remiss in not recognizing the High School Transformational Leadership Committee members and our fantastic, world-class principals. If you could stand and please be recognized. Tonight, Lipscomb University had the doctoral cohort welcome dinner, so several of the principals are working on their doctorate and are attending that. But I have the privilege of working with the best group of high school principals I've ever seen. They are committed to these students. They are cutting-edge, they're innovative, and they deeply care about what's happening in these schools and these kids. So it is my pleasure tonight to talk to you about an incredible program. Did you realize that Pearl Cone High School has the only record label in a high school in the entire world? And it's just beginning this year. There were 20 students this summer that spent one month at Warner Music with a paid internship, and Music Makes Us paid these students to conduct this incredible experience. So tonight, we have Gerald, the Governor Harris, that's his nickname, with us. He's a senior at Pearl Cone, and his principal, Sonia Stewart, was gonna be here tonight, but we were originally scheduled to go on at 5:15. She had open house with her kids, so she regrettably could not be here. He is in the, he's an ambassador for the Academies of Nashville. He is in the Academy of Entertainment Communications. He's anchor of Pearl Cone TV, so you'll see him on TV a lot. He's an Emmy winner, a student Emmy winner, and he is on the record label team. So he's gonna talk to you about his experience this summer with Warner Music. Gerald.
Thank you. I'm so happy to be here. I would like to thank Mr. Jay Steele for inviting me to be here today. Also, I would like to thank the Executive Principal at Pearl Cone Entertainment Magnet High School, Ms. Stewart, also Dr. Matthews, my academy principal, and also my academy coach, Ms. Ernestine Wilson. When our school announced that we were gonna have a record label, the excitement was up in the air. So many people wanted to be involved, and so many people wanted to help out in the formation of creating this outstanding relationship with Warner Music Nashville and also Music Makes Us and also Pearl Cone. I represent the A in our division of the record label at Pearl Cone, artists in repertoire. I find the artists, I sign the artists, and I scout the artists to see and help them through the developmental stages of their early career. There were 20 of us, 20 of us that went off-site from Pearl Cone and went to Warner Music Nashville. And Warner Music so graciously accepted us in their building. They had a spirit that translated to us, which made us bring it back to Pearl Cone and help build this record label. The outlook for this record label is huge. 80,000 students here, and any Metro Nashville public school student has the opportunity to submit a demo to be heard and to be accepted to the record label and to be signed. This is extreme exposure for those young students and also allows students to be more engaged in school and be excited to attend school. At Pearl Cone Entertainment Magnet High School, we are doing a lot of great things. The administration there is committed, and we're committed as a student body. To conclude, Pearl Cone is the housing of the district record label. Everyone in the district, every child in the district has the opportunity to submit and be an artist on the record label. We're excited about it, and I'd also like to thank Mr. Steele again for allowing me to speak on Pearl Cone. The experience there at Warner Music Nashville was amazing, and hopefully we'll do a lot of more of these things for future generation of students here in metro Nashville public schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Gerald. Okay, next, I'd like to introduce Dr. Schrader, who's the Executive Principal of Hillsborough High School, to introduce three of his students who had an incredible summer in China thanks to a partnership that we've developed with the Confucius Institute.
Hillsborough High School truly is an international school. All of our academies at Hillsborough have an international flavor, from our outstanding international baccalaureate diploma program to our Academy of Global Health and Science to our Academy of International Business and Communications. Last year, I had the incredible opportunity to travel to China with the Confucius Institute and establish a Confucius classroom at Hillsborough. This partnership brings two Chinese professors to us from Beijing to teach Chinese language and culture. This summer, Hillsborough sent three of our students to China to experience the language and the culture there. It's my pleasure to introduce these three students to share their incredible experience with you. Adam and Noah Simmons are both in the IB Diploma Academy, and Ms. Morgan Hyde is in our Academy of International Business. It's my pleasure to introduce them to the Board this evening.
My name is Morgan Hyde, and I'm here to share with you my amazing trip to China. My favorite part of the trip was when we climbed the Great Wall of China and the homestay with our Chinese friends. During the homestay, I made dumplings and asked my friend about different questions about her culture. After my experience in China, I do believe I have become humble and grateful for everything I have. I was able to attend this trip because I'm in the Academy of International Business, and there's a partnership with the Confucius Institute at Hillsborough High School. My pathway, my pathway teacher encouraged me to apply for this wonderful opportunity that I have. Thank you.
My name is Noah Simmons. This is my brother, Adam Simmons. Okay, we would just like to share with you all our experiences about our trip to China and on behalf of Confucius Classrooms, Confucius Institute, in association with the University of Memphis, and IB program with Hillsborough. So last year, one year ago, my Chinese teacher recommended that me and Adam go to China to further our study, our learning in the language. The program in which we participated in is called the Chinese Bridge Summer Camp Program for American Students. And what you do in the program is you'll go to China, you'll learn about the language, you'll learn about the culture, and you'll enhance your knowledge about China, China and the Chinese. So Adam would like to share some of his experiences as well.
Wan chong hao means good evening. China was a great experience for us as we learned about Chinese culture and Chinese language. Visiting China has truly changed our perspective of international study and international education. My experience in China was both educational and fun, and I would just like to say that it wouldn't be able, it could not have happened without Hillsborough. So xie xie mi man, which means thank you all very much.
I will say, I've traveled to China twice with a couple of the Board members, and Mr. Hayes, you were on the trip where we discovered this program and asked for it to be placed at Hillsborough High School. So it shows you the fruits of our labor and the hard work that took to get this program here, and it is paying off. Now the kids are benefiting from that. We do have two full Chinese teachers here that are directly from Beijing and teaching Chinese at J.T. Moore and Hillsborough. All right, this, I want to share with you our shared mission. This is the high school shared mission that all of the principles that we govern by. Metropolitan Nashville Public Schools are world-class schools that graduate college and career-ready students. and career-ready students in partnership with the community. MNPS will emerge as a trendsetter and innovative practice where all students have the highest level of education and experience as possible. Our vision is that we will, every student will belong to a personalized, smaller learning community engaged around interests where relationships are valued. Instruction is project-based, applied and integrated, where meaningful business engagement is evident, post-secondary institutions are involved, and the community is supportive. There are five characteristics of a graduate that I want to share with you that we are working toward. We want every student to have a tenure plan for post-secondary education and career. This is developed in the ninth grade, and that is currently happening online at collegefortn.org. This next statement has been twisted several times in the media and in meetings. At least a 21 composite score on the ACT, not anything less, or we want more than that. Right now, we're setting at an 18.1 average score. 21 gets 70% of our students who are on free reduced lunch, free college credit access. It pays their tuition. So at least a 21. We are not satisfied with that. A work-based or service-learning experience or a capstone research project, and we're putting that in place this year. At least one course completed online, and we're quickly reaching that goal, because if we're not preparing kids to excel online, they're not ready for college. College credit and/or a nationally-recognized professional certification. In redesigning our high schools, we have recently announced a 5.0 GPA. This has been in the works for about four to five months. The TLG has been researching this, and we did put it into place this summer to reward students for taking more advanced, rigorous courses such as AP, IB, dual enrollment, and honors credit. The 5.0 GPA will be in effect for all 9th through 12th graders. It will be on their transcript, a weighted and unweighted. However, in order of class ranking, we're only implementing in grades 9 through 11 the first year. Seniors will be exempt from the class ranking using the 5.0 this first year. We have a virtual school, again, that has gone K-12, enrolling middle school. We have our highest registration of middle schools at this point, and we will be expanding into elementary in year three. IB expansion, you'll learn more about this, but we are expanding IB into one school in the southern part of the county, yet to be named, but we will be naming that soon. We are introducing a new program, an Advanced International Certificate of Education, ACE. ACE is from the Cambridge University, and Dr. Sharon Chaney will share that with you in just a few minutes. Expansion of the AP Scholars Program that's currently at Hillwood. Every high school in this district will have a national or international college credit-bearing program, AP Scholars Program, ACE, and IB. As you heard, Music Makes Us is expanding, and this is just the beginning of that. Business and community engagement, we have over 180 partners working in our school to develop and deliver an enhanced curriculum. We are developing a Merit Scholar Program. This has been a criticism in the media lately. We have identified the top 75% of all students in Metro in grades 9 through 10 that are predicted to score at the upper range on the ACT using their explore data, their TCAP data, and their EOC data. This has been shared with the principals this past week, and they are developing a Merit Scholar Program for 9th and 10th graders that will focus these students on the PSAT and taking the SAT in the 11th grade. The one thing that we're going to have to come up with is the funding to pay for these extra two tests for the students. It's our intention that all of these identified students will be in the Merit Scholar Program and prepped for it. We are an ACT state. Every student in the 11th grade has the option of taking the ACT free of charge. This past year, SAT was opened up to the students across the state, but they have to choose either one, ACT or SAT. We've also developed a literacy focus, a continuous improvement process, in every single high school. Every high school has disaggregated their English data and developed an instructional focus calendar using the Common Core informational text standards. And you can go into any high school, ask to see the calendar, you'll see it posted on the walls, you'll see it in the announcements, you'll see it, ask every student in every school, and they will be able to tell you what the literacy focus of the day is and the ACT word of the day. Transforming teaching and learning. We have contracted with the Buck Institute, which is the world leader in project-based learning. They work with Singapore, which is the number-one school district in the entire world in many avenues. They also have, working with the Los Angeles School District in Nashville, to train our teachers on project-based learning, real-world application. We are also developing the capstone research projects, service learning, and work-based learning experiences for all students. We are expanding and establishing, as I told you, dual enrollment, IB, AP, and ACE. Virtual and blended learning. Every AP and IB teacher has been trained in this district on using Blackboard, which is the leader in blended learning that's used by most colleges and universities. If a student graduates high school not knowing what a blended course is and not knowing how to function in Blackboard, we're doing a disservice to those students. We have this in place now in every AP and IB classroom, have been trained in it, and in January, they must establish their students in the blended learning environment. Stratford STEM School has gone completely blended learning in all grades 9 through 12 this year, and our freshman seminar classes in the academies are also in the blended environment, and our virtual school uses that. We have an ACT and literacy focus, and Dr. Chauncey is going to talk about our ACT focus in just a few minutes. We did a pilot project that he'll tell you about this past year, and he'll share those results with you. Sustaining that change through business, effective business engagement. As I said, we have 180 partners working with us to develop, deliver, and enhance curriculum. We are aligned with all the colleges, university, technical schools, apprenticeship programs with articulation agreement, so our kids are getting college credit in their academies or in their schools. We've sent teachers out on teacher externships, students out on work-based learning, executives in the classroom. We have five branded academies, as you've learned, Gaylord, CMT, Ford, Tennessee Credit Union, and the U.S. Community Credit Union. This next one is very important, because this is extremely important. We are redesigning our classrooms across the district, and we have been at this for two years. I invite you to go into Stratford, Antioch, Hunter's Lane, Overton, Hillsborough, and see these exciting transformations in classrooms, one classroom at a time, and I'll use Nissan as an example. Using Race to the Top money, we approached Nissan to help us redesign an automotive engineering classroom. With their engineers on site, they designed the classroom, and we invested $150,000 to bring the design to life that those engineers designed, and it has opened this year at Antioch. Same thing with the Bio10 Foundation in creating biotechnology classrooms. I visited this morning at Stratford, and they are world-class collegiate-level biotechnology classrooms. We've worked with MDion and Hunter's Lane to do computer animation, Deloitte, working with Overton to do the networking and computer programming classrooms, Gaylord redoing the culinary arts programs at McGabbic, the Tennessee Bureau of Investigation doing forensic science at Stratford, the Center for Science Outreach at Vanderbilt, working with Hillsborough and Stratford to redo the science classrooms. It is truly amazing what's happening in this collaborative space. I invite you to go see it. We had over 27 teacher teams this summer out in the community developing curriculum with our business partners, and they are delivering that through a project-based format with the business partners, working alongside them. It's truly transformational, and you heard that with our student speakers tonight. We are also implementing a student project exposition that will be announced for spring. I'm working with the Chamber of Commerce and the Industry Council Partnerships. We're meeting on Friday. I see Rita here. We're meeting on Friday to discuss that, and we will be implementing a system-wide place where our students can showcase and have a public audience for their projects that they're working on. Now, in creating a college culture, we have the structure in place. It took time to get the structure in place here to allow all of this to happen, and it is moving at warp speed. Now we're working on creating that college culture, and this has been our three, we have a five-year plan, and we're in year three of that. We're expanding our AP offerings in our virtual school, so every student has access to that. AP Calculus is being taken by our National School of the Arts students and any student in the district who needs AP Calculus. AP Computer Science, taken by many of our students, AP Psychology. Some of these were not offered in every single high school. Now every student has access. We are expanding IB to one school. We're expanding the Advanced Scholars Program to five schools. We're creating the Advanced International Certificate of Education, which came to the U.S. in 1994, and the first high school was St. Augustine High School, which I'm very intimately familiar with, and know how ACE works, and we'll be implementing that in four schools. All AP and IB classes taught in the blended environment within the next three years, starting now. Expand dual enrollment in every high school, which we've done this past year. Establishing the Merit Scholar Prep Program in all high schools, and then an ACT plan. So at this time, I'm going to introduce Dr. Sharon Chaney to talk about our blended learning initiative and lead us through that discussion.
Thank you, Jay. Our AP and IB teachers in the district are truly pioneers. They're trailblazers for us in this blended learning initiative. In this exciting learning environment, the student is, of course, at the center, as the graphic indicates, and gets resources from other people, their peers, their parents, their teachers, their coaches and mentors. And then through these resources, they're able to analyze, gather information, even create knowledge. Tishan Nai, who is a blended learning instructional designer with our district, has, this past semester, created the online training for our AP and IB teachers. We met with 16 principals of buildings where AP and/or IB courses are offered for the purpose of getting face-to-face orientation with those teacher groups. As of 4 o'clock this afternoon, 56% of all of our AP and IB teachers in the district have completed their online training, and they are setting about to create content for their empty shells and their master course template, with the goal of all AP and IB teachers going live with blended learning in January 2013. The, one of the international programs that is getting a lot of attention from our schools is the ACE program, the Cambridge program from the, from UK. We are working very carefully and closely with Sherri Reach, who is the manager, the regional manager of Cambridge schools for the Americas, so that we are sure that we complete the right steps in the right order. And we, we know that several of our schools are investigating the fit of the ACE programs for their schools. In your materials, you have a five-page document that describes the Cambridge programs and what it takes to become a Cambridge school. On the third page of that document is a graphic with a series of arrows that shows the articulation of the courses from the primary schools to the high schools in the ACE program. And you'll see another acronym, IGCE, they call it, I-G-S-E. That stands for International General Certificate of Secondary Education, which in the ACE terminology is for the 9th and 10th grade students who are preparing toward the ACE program for the 11th and 12th grade. And they can earn that when they accumulate enough points on their assessments and their One of the existing programs in our district for highly motivated students is the Advanced Placement. This is designed and developed by the College Board headquartered in New York, and the, all of the 16, all 16 high schools in our district offer the AP courses. Students who study the AP classes write national exams in the spring, and then they are expected on those exams to demonstrate college-level reading and writing and analytical skills. And they receive a score from the College Board on a scale of one to five. The College Board describes those scores as three being qualified, four, well-qualified for college work, and five, extremely well-qualified. This chart shows our results in our district in the Advanced Placement Program for the past six years. The blue bars indicate the number of examinations that are written by our students, and the red bars, the numbers, the scores of three-plus that have been earned by our students. And we see that the 2011-12 bars are higher than the others, and we're pleased to note that 49.4% of our students earn three-plus scores, and we commend the students and their teachers for the commitment to excellence and their hard work. Another very exciting method of learning for our highly motivated students is the International Baccalaureate Diploma Program, which has been referenced by Jay already in the report. The IB organization has authorized two of our high schools to deliver the, this marvelous curriculum to our students. It's a very intensive authorization process. The two schools are Hunter's Lane and Hillsborough. And we see from this chart very consistent growth in the programs at Hunter's Lane. For the class of 2013, there are 31 full diploma candidates with 35 juniors in that course. They will be next year's senior, full senior candidates. Notice the explosion of numbers in the Hillsborough IB Diploma Program. They have 87 senior candidates, full candidates for this year, with 95 juniors in the program. So with all of this, we look forward to the investigations, particularly in the, for the ACE programs, and we will have more information to share with you in the later report.
Thank you, Dr. Chaney. Members of the board, I'm Jeff Yarborough, the community co-chair of the high school TLG, and happy to be here with you tonight. We are thrilled to have some of our principals here tonight, like Dr. Chaney and Dr. Chauncey, whom I'm about to introduce, because I think that we who have been involved in the high school reform efforts really do believe that the quality of leadership, the quality of teaching that we have in the buildings, the quality of instruction that goes on in the classrooms is where this is going to, where the difference is going to be made, and not in any sort of structures or things that we do in a committee room. It really is about improving the quality of instruction, and I think that's what we're committed to doing. One of the things that I'm excited about is we used Race to the Top money that was distributed to the district last year to run a pilot program. We ran three different tests in three of the high schools to focus on improving ACT scores. And Dr. Chauncey from Hillwood High School is going to walk us through the program that they implemented that was the most successful, achieved the biggest gains, and that we're rolling out in a larger selection of high schools this year.
Good evening. I'm Steve Chauncey. It's my first opportunity to be in front of this board. I'm just hoping to get my name on one of these monitors up here. But I found the opportunity to be with you. I want to talk to you about a serious issue, is we want to improve or move our ACT scores forward. And as Jay referred to earlier, one of the characteristics, or one of the five characteristics of a MNPS graduate is to score at least a 21 or higher on the ACT. Now, I said at least 21 or higher. And back in 2010, my staff and I looked at a plan. We developed a plan, what we cleverly called Act Now, Act Now, and that was in 2010, and it was developed to improve ACT scores and to help monitor and prep students and tutor students to improve in their ACTs. Now, like anything, there's bad news and good news, okay? The bad news is that Tennessee is 49th out of 50 in the performance of the ACT. The good news is there's only seven states, including Tennessee, that all of the 11th graders are tested. As Jay alluded to earlier, there's some modifications to the SAT coming with that, but that is important to realize. So as we went through, we looked at the purpose. What was our purpose? Obviously, it was to increase scores. But ACT is a recognized part of the Tennessee Diploma Project. ACT scores will be used to award honor diplomas. Now, this is very important. I want you to listen carefully to this. There are benchmarks set by the ACT that each student must acquire to be college-ready. And across our state, there's only 15% of the students that sit for the ACT that meet all of those benchmarks. So that is something that we need to address, and hopefully, this plan will address that. Also, we want to increase ACT scores to receive the Hope Scholarship and continue for families to receive this. Higher ACT scores equal more scholarship money. Higher ACT scores equal more scholarship money. Our areas of focus at Hillwood were to look at the standards by department. We ask each of our departments to look at the standards required by ACT. Do some work to determine how we're assessing these standards and see if they're being taught, when they're being taught, and how they're being taught, so our students are exposed to this and we can look at their weaknesses and strengths to improve ACT. We also put in professional development for our teachers and professional development opportunities to address teacher effectiveness. We had to make sure that our teachers were effective in the classroom to see that these ACTs scores were improving. And we had professional development where external trainers came into our school. There were at least six other high schools that came to Hillwood over the past two summers that participated in ACT workshops, ACT classroom preparation. It's very, been very beneficial for our school as well as some of the other high schools. Now, the actual plan, I'm gonna go in reverse, okay? Most of our juniors, they take the ACT in the 11th grade. So I'm gonna go from 11th grade to 10th grade to 9th grade of, of the plan. And our juniors currently for this year, what happens is our counselors, our school counselors discuss with all our departments and our teachers, the plan scores that the students took in the 10th grade. So we identify weaknesses and strengths and start to address those weaknesses and strengths for each of our students. Then we, in the fall, we take a mock ACT exam. That's a retired exam from the ACT. We score that, we look at those, share those data with, with the students, their results, again, what their strengths and weaknesses are. We go back and identify those and we work to improve the students' scores. Also, we use the Cambridge Prep. We're gonna try to use that as part of the preparation for our juniors. And that's, test costs $13 per student, but that helps us to give specific standards and areas that we need to strengthen for each student. So if these students will go back and look at this Cambridge Prep assessment, it will certainly help them as they prepare for the ACT. So our juniors get to take the ACT or practice twice in their junior year before the February date of the ACT. So in our 10th graders, our sophomores, all 10th grade students are enrolled in critical thinking or magic writing classes that focus on ACT preparation. Students sit for the plan test early in October, which is a precursor to the ACT. Counselors along with the teachers in the critical thinking classes, they work with the plan results and again, look at the students' strengths and weaknesses. Departments develop ACT strategies, again, with our sophomores, such things as bell ringers, ACT word walls, ACT standard checklist, ACT pacing guide, and ACT practice materials. So it was really intense in the sophomore year. 10th graders will sit for an ACT online. We have a one-to-one laptop at Hillwood, so we use those laptops to allow students to sit for this ACT and it's called Learning Express. So again, our sophomores have two opportunities in their sophomore year to sit for a practice ACT test. And we do not leave out our freshmen. We all like freshmen. We know they're gonna be sophomores and juniors eventually and we want them to be very successful, okay? So our freshmen, we make sure that we introduce the concepts of the ACT in freshman seminar. A freshman seminar is designed to help our students progress as they go through freshman and freshman is a very challenging year and we want to make sure that freshmen become sophomores. Our school council reviews and disaggregates all the explore data from the 8th grade year. And then our freshman academy teachers, again, they would develop bell ringer strategies and all the things to do to practice for the ACT. So finally, in the spring of the freshman year, the freshmen will all sit after the EOCs. They, they like more testing. So after the EOCs in the spring, they sit for the ACT, again, practice for all of our freshmen. So to conclude about the plan as far as the practice, there's five opportunities for our students to sit for ACT practice, be assessed, reevaluated, enrichment for ACT. So I found that to be successful. And the results, as we look at the class of 2011, that was actually a class that graduated in 2011. That's when we first started talking about ACT Now. That school, that group had 16.9 or about 34% out of 201 students that made a 21 or higher in 2000, that class. And the class of 2012, which just graduated in May, that class, they scored 46 out of 177, 25.9, so that we had a 9% increase from one class to the next class. This current class, the class of 2013, they have scored, 63 out of 241 students scored 21 or higher, which is 20, 26% of the students that score 21 or higher are a 9.24% increase. So over a period of three years, we've seen substantial increase in the amount of students that have scored 21 or higher. So we think that it's worked. That's the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chauncey. As, as Dr. Chauncey said, we use Race to the Top money to fund three pilots in three schools. Hillwood had the best results and now we, as a district, have implemented that in all of our high schools and hopefully we'll have the same results. I wanted to share with you our data. I know it's a little hard to read, but our Algebra I data, we are, this is a three-year average in the kids who are proficient or advanced. We are increasing every year. We have also increased our English 2. We're not happy with the, the slight increase in English 2 from a 46.6 to 48.7, but we are moving in the right direction. Our writing in the high school is higher than it's ever been. Over 91% of our students are scoring advanced or proficient in writing. Our graduation rate is, you can see there was a spike at 82, a little, almost 83%. And then the state changed the calculation of how they calculated. Even by federal law, students with special needs and English learners can take up to five years or longer to graduate. The state is now holding us to a four-year rate, trumping the federal law. So we did take a dip to 76, a little over 76% in the graduation rate. We're not happy with the graduation rate. However, the state changed the calculation but did not change the targets. You can see our attendance rate is higher than it's ever been, 92.35% attendance rate last year. So all indicators are pointing in the right direction. Are we moving fast enough? No. Are we satisfied? No. We're not satisfied until 100% of our students are advanced or proficient. So we are continuing to fight this on a daily basis through instructional-focused calendars, through teaming, through great teachers, great administrators, and ACT plans and everything that you've seen. So this is the High School Transformational Leadership Group Plan and what we're gonna be working, working on this year.
And I think what Jay just said there at the end is actually really important. I mean, I think these presentations before this board oftentimes present a lot of the good news and, I mean, a lot of what we have to do is focus on, on the work that has to be done. And I think those of us who, who've been watching this effort know that, know that we're encouraged that things can go in the right direction but still impatient to improve things far more. There's a great deal of work to do in terms of improving advanced academics and improving graduation rates and really increasing the opportunities that are available to the students of, of, of this community. And when we, when we see numbers, we like to see them going in the right direction, but until those numbers start reaching 100%, all of us have a moral obligation to keep our foot on the accelerator. And we really do want to invite this board, the new board members that are in the audience and everyone to, to, to be part of, of this effort and, and, and help us in, in moving these, these schools forward. So with that, I think we can take questions from the board.
Yes, Ms. Shepherd.
Wow. The report was great. Thank you so much for all that information. I would certainly like to have a copy of some of that information because there was a lot that was done out there. I couldn't write fast enough. And one of the most exciting pieces is the 5.0 GPA grading scale. I think that's long overdue and I was surprised to hear that it was only four or five months in the making and yet we're rolling it out for this school year. So that is fantastic. That's wonderful news and I really do appreciate all the work that everyone did to make, present this information to us. Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Mays.
A couple of questions. And I know you said, Mr. Steele, that you haven't made an announcement yet, but I'm really curious, curious to know where the IB program is going to be since you did mention southeast Davidson County. Just curious. One other question that I had is the Learning Express library. Is there a cost to the school for that?
The Learning Express library?
Well, he's, the practice test on Learning Express? Yeah.
No, there's not a cost to the school. That is free, online.
I just, yeah, okay, thanks. I just, I just kind of.
One other thing that we left out of that presentation, the virtual school is actually taking the curriculum that Hillswood, Hillwood is using in their creative writing court and their critical thinking course, and we're gonna create a virtual course that will be available for all students in Metro.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Comments?
I just can't imagine a high school student not wanting to be in attendance every day with all the great innovations that are taking place.
Me either.
Mr. Hayes?
I'm not sure if it was, I guess, who referenced this this evening, but the ACT plan for each school has been created and is in place?
Yes. It was unveiled to the principals in June. Dr. Chauncey educated them on it and they've implemented it in various stages throughout the school district.
Dr. Chauncey referenced some specific score data for the 2012 year. I guess he had compared 11 results with 12 results and, and referenced some significant improvements, which are great. Do you have that data for all schools at 2012? And if you don't, when can we expect to hear how we've done?
Usually that data will come out probably in October, early November, because right now what we have by school is the 11th graders who took it during that window of time. What ACT will do is look over the entire year of every student in that school and whenever their last testing window should be pretty soon, after that is done, they'll calculate the whole year's scores and give them to us. So that usually comes in late October, early November.
In your ACT plan, I guess, for each school, did you have a timeline for moving all students to a 21? If we want to look at a successful benchmark for your program, you know, do you have any sort of benchmarks within that plan at the school level that would say, you know, what we can look at this plan and say in, in 18 months, we've done it. You know, we've moved up 3% or 6%. We've, right, I mean, you look at some schools, we have some schools where no student in 2011 met any of the benchmarks, any of our goals for the ACT. Did we lay out in that plan specific benchmarks and goals and timelines?
No. Each, each school is disaggregating their own data and will determine those benchmarks. The ACT is one of the hardest scores to move. Moving 1% is a terrific thing to do and that's, Hillwood moving that quickly is what caught our attention. So each school will look a little bit differently in how they disaggregate their data and design their plan and the targets within their plan will be determined on their data. So I can't give you a district plan like that. That would be individual.
No, but I guess the, and maybe I'm confused, but so at the building level, each school had a plan completed in June?
It was introduced to them in June and they had to have their plan to me by August 1st, their ACT plan electronically. So I have it by school.
You have a, okay, you have a plan by, by school delivered to you August 1st and within that plan, they laid out what they thought that they could achieve?
They did not put benchmarks in there, no.
Without, without benchmarks, how will you judge the plan successful?
They take their baseline data of where they are now and then we'll measure success based on the scores each prior year from that.
Okay.
The number of kids scoring a 21 or higher is what's measured by the Chamber Report Card.
Right.
So that is a measurement that each school will use.
Right. I'd, I'd love to see the, the plan for each school, each high school. My fellow board members would as well, but.
Sure. We can get that to you. We have it electronically.
Would be great. Thank you.
Dr. Gentry?
So Mr. Hayes kind of started down one of my questions with the 21+, because I think it sounds a little, looking in the rearview mirror. If we don't have a target, if each school doesn't have a plan or what they're aiming for, I don't know how you measure it's successful other than, I don't know, comparing all of them and their growth and whoever was the highest is the most successful. It just seems a little fluid to me about how we're, if we don't have a goal to judge it successful after the scores come in, not comparing it to what we thought the efforts and the resources that we put into it were designed to achieve. So I guess when we see the plans, maybe we can kind of give some more concise feedback on.
Sure. And I can ask each high school to set the goals based on their individual data. That's, that's easy to do.
Yeah, I mean, they can be and I don't, I would not expect them to be a district goal.
Right. Hume-Fawkes is gonna have a different goal than Whites Creek or Pearl Cone or Antioch or Cambridge.
Absolutely. Two more questions. And this may have been already shared and I apologize if I missed it, but I know there's been some questions I've received about trying to understand why we are exempting seniors from the 5.0 scale?
The valedictorian and salutatorian are determined at the end of the first semester, so that would give our seniors only one semester and their schedules were already set. We did not want to mess with valedictorian, salutatorian, and class ranking this year. We wanted to give the students in the 11th grade three semesters. We felt within three semesters, they could make any changes within their schedule and several students have been doing that, but we did not think it would be fair to mess with the seniors this year. They're getting a 5.0, they're getting a weighted and an unweighted GPA. We're retroactively doing that on their transcripts. It just will not be in the, the class ranking calculation.
So it's class ranking?
Yes.
It's not their GPA? Just to be very clear.
For the seniors this year.
For the seniors.
Right. They will get a weighted and unweighted GPA, 4.0 and a 5.0, but it will not affect.
So they'll have a weighted GPA that will be shared with prospective college?
Yes.
Part of their application.
Both will be on their transcripts.
So just want to make it very clear.
Yes. We've gotten a lot of questions about that.
Very good.
Both will be on the transcript.
The third question I have is around the subset of students we're pulling out to be a part of the Merit Scholar Program that we've identified. You may not have it available, but you could, in the near future, share the demographics of that subgroup. I would appreciate it.
Sure. We have it by school and the number, we exactly, know exactly who those students are by school at every school, in 9th and 10th grade.
So if you can send that through Visha maybe to us, I would appreciate it.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate the information. Recommendation of approval of 2013-14 district calendar. Dr. Regis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll call in Dr. Hall and Larry Collier to come up, who have chaired and coordinated the calendar committee.
Good evening. Dr. Register and Madam Chairperson. Tonight Larry Collier, who works in student assignments, who is retired, but he comes back to help with us, will present to you the, the new school calendar year for 2013, 2014. A committee consisting of parents, principals, teachers, district personnel, and M&amp;A work together to collaborate to develop this calendar. And so at this time Larry Collier will present it and if you have any questions, we'll answer it together.
Thank you, Dr. Hall. This shouldn't take more than an hour, so we'll just get right to it. I'll just cover the highlights. I think it's pretty self-explanatory in your packet. Students' first day would be August 1st. Their last day would be May 30th. It is a much more balanced calendar than this year. It's nine, truly nine weeks on, two weeks off. There are four days in each semester for intercession and 176 days of instruction, six built-in snow days. We made the third grading period a little bit longer to account for any snow days that might occur in January and February. And it's interesting to note that there are, the summer, next summer, students will have one day short of 10 weeks off from school. Any questions?
Just a quick observation, if I may. As you know, we're, we're just now a week and a half into the balanced calendar, the new calendar.
new calendar, and we appreciate the cooler weather this year, because I know there was a concern about getting started. I think we're to the point now where we're into what would have been the normal start time. We're very close to it. We have given you a calendar, and we've talked about this a lot. We've gone back and made minor adjustments and tweaks to it on several occasions, but it's really, we really tried to mirror what we were doing this year with some, with minor improvements, because it's still, we're still very premature. We can't evaluate the effectiveness of this year's calendar, so, until, until we live it, until we live with it for a year. And we'll have a good sense of that as we move into the late spring and start working on another year, but we feel like at this time, the, the right thing to do is to go ahead and commit to the approach that we're taking now, after the long debate and a lot of public input over the last year or so in developing this. We feel like this is very workable and should, should serve us very well.
Mr. Noel.
Is this calendar something that you're expecting a vote on action tonight? Is it something that should wait for the new board? What's, what's your feeling on it? And then.
We have it on for approval tonight, and of course, if you, if you hesitate on that, if you're hesitant about doing that tonight, then of course, we can bring it back to the new board. Our thinking was, one, that we're a little bit late on schedule. Parents are asking, parents want to know what the calendar for, for the 2013 school year is now, and this board's been involved in extended conversations over the past couple of years about doing, adopting a calendar like this, so I think it would be kind to the, to the new board members to go ahead and get this one out of the way, quite frankly.
Ms. Sheppard. We're not ready.
I just have one question. As far as the number of instructional days at 176, has that changed, or is that constant from this, this year?
That's the same as this year with six snow days.
Okay. Both are the same. Okay.
I just, I just have one question, and I was thinking along the same line that one of the parents mentioned earlier tonight in public participation, on the two days for Thanksgiving holidays. Is that something that, you know, like that Monday and Tuesday in November? Is that something that has been ever discussed in your meetings, or?
We discussed. What were your thoughts on that? We discussed different options, but if you look in October, you have the week of fall break.
Oh, okay.
And then that's a week, and before that, you have the intercession. So if we start moving, it's going to end up students going to school in June. We didn't want them to do that, so we wanted to make sure they ended, ended in May. We looked at several options.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion, board members?
Boo-boo.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, y'all, Mr. Hayes?
Yes. Dr. Register, can you talk with us about projected funding for intercession for next calendar? I guess we're on a federal cycle, is October 1st, is that correct?
That's correct. Are you talking about for this year that we're in now?
No, I mean, I, I know that when we voted on this calendar a year ago, we were hopeful that federal funds would be more plentiful than perhaps they, they have been, particularly the SES dollars. As we move into the calendar that we are set to vote on this evening, the most dramatic change is, right, from, from two years ago to this year, and certainly next year, is the, is intercession. Funding is certainly less than we'd hoped for fall at the federal level and in the, in the spring. I believe it's in line with where we are, close to where we thought it would be. Do we, do we have alternative sources of funding? Do we have any community or nonprofit partnerships that would allow us to certainly offer the same level of service that we're hoping to offer this year, but hopefully even expand it further, or do we, do we have much clarity on that yet?
Our, well, the big unknown is where federal funding's going. Title I's basically funding intercession work that we're, that we're paying for. We could use a little bit of race to the top as a fallback if we, if, if budget's very restricted, but we really, we really started funding with the idea that we wanted it to be sustainable and to grow. Now, what happened with our Title I budget this year is that was restricted, but we do have access to supplemental educational service budgets that we haven't had before. Bottom line is, it's, it's, it's a little bit tighter this year, but we, we have good support from our schools. The school, the great majority of the work that's being done in intercession is school-based, tailor-made for each, the needs of each student in each school, and Title I funds are being used to, to fund that. Principals have been given more Title I funds this year. We restricted what the district had to use and made sure that the actual Title I funds allotted to the schools was increased this year. So we feel pretty good with it, and as, you know, it, it's an unknown now about what happens next year. Is Title I going to be reauthorized? I don't think we'll know anything until after the presidential election, quite frankly, about what's happening to funding in Washington in, for, for another year. But we feel pretty good about where we are now. We feel like we can sustain this program and grow it. I want to, I'm sorry that Tony Majors had to leave to, he's starting his doctoral program tonight and, and had to get there, but Tony's done tremendous amount of work in engaging community partners, and we have many community partners that are stepping up and wanting to take a part of the planning that's being done in these intercessions. The fall session is, this year, is intentionally smaller. Parents didn't know what it was going to look like. Teachers didn't know what they were signing up for. We're getting into it, but it'll be, but what we anticipate is we move from fall into spring, the spring week before testing. There'll be an urgency about that. We see the numbers going up then, then, and I think for next year, assuming it works, we'll see an increased number of students. We're, we're looking at thousands of students, literally, who will be engaged in the intercession time in the fall and the spring this year.
As we, as we look at certainly fall and spring and then into next year especially, when do we begin to see enrollment? I mean, I, it's, it's an optional program if you participate in the intercession. Is that right?
It is at this time, yes.
At this time? And so when do we begin to see registration numbers and see how many people are, are participating in it?
It'll be, it'll be close to time.
The week, the week of or the week after, we'll have a report.
Yes.
Do we, do we have much of a, a marketing budget established to, to out, you know, to provide outreach to parents and say, hey, here's what we're doing, here's, here are all the things that are offered? I know you'd mentioned Mr. Majors, but how are we?
We'd be a part of our communications budget and also in working in conjunction with the principals. Best communicators on a school-based program are the principals and the teachers. So that's, that's, that's a lot of how we'll roll that. We'll also do district-wide media on the intercession as it, as it approaches.
For faculty and staff at the school level who are not leading or involved in, directly in the intercession, is it just a, it's, they don't report those days? Is that right?
Some of the teachers will be working together to, to, for PD, professional learning communities, so some will be working with the students and some will work together if they choose to, to collaborate. We're looking at, you know, our common core, which is coming down the pike very soon, so the developing units with our project-based learning. So we have them all engaged.
Opportunities for professional development.
Yes.
But the teacher, the teacher, the number of days that teachers work or pay is the same.
Right.
It's just spread out a little bit.
These are, these are ancillary revenue opportunities for teachers who want to teach. This doesn't count against 176 days.
No, 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 it doesn't.
Exactly. They can come in and get a stipend, they can make a little bit extra money if.
Yes.
If they, they teach, or they could elect to, to participate in professional development, or they could.
Right.
They could do some work around their house and stay home.
And every school has submitted a intercession proposal to their lead principal.
Thank you.
Are we ready? Any more?
Question.
Question has been called for. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Consideration of State Board of Education's recommendation to approve Great Hearts Academy's charter application. Do we have a motion?
I will, I will. Started off with a motion. Didn't start the, the discussion, I guess. Contingent upon, one, Great Hearts showing a developed plan for diversity and the will and desire to implement the plan that mirrors the plan and implementation efforts MNPS utilizes in its schools of choice. And, and contingent upon, two, Great Hearts showing a plan to employ only licensed teachers and actually employing only licensed teachers. And contingent upon, Great Hearts recognizing and acknowledging that only one school is being considered during this application cycle. I move we approve the application and authorize the director of schools to develop a charter contract between MNPS and Great Hearts if and only if the three above conditions are met. It is so moved.
Do we have a second?
No, I want to make statements.
Okay, let's get a second first and then we'll do discussion. Second, Dr. Gentry. Okay. Now.
I'll preface my remarks by saying that I normally am not a fan of personal remarks being made at a school board meeting, but I feel so passionate about this issue that I've decided to address my colleagues about this issue. And I've asked to speak to you tonight in light of the actions of the recent decision handed down to us from the State Department of Education. After a robust application and review process and lengthy discussion and debate, the Metro Nashville Board of Education not once but twice denied the charter school application for Great Hearts Academy. Seven of us agree that three major sticking points were non-certificated teachers, the lack of diversity, and the necessity of multiple locations to be effective in the city of Nashville. Coincidentally, the State Board of Education decision to return Great Hearts application to us cited these three same concerns. In fact, the State Board said approval is contingent upon Great Hearts addressing these three deficiencies. When did the area of educating our students, all of our students, become a political one? Thousands of dollars have been raised in SuperPACs and other privately funded organizations for the support of political, political campaigns, all in the name of furthering private interest, open enrollment, charter schools, or segregation by another name. Just recently, Doctors Register and Changus held a press conference to announce academic improvement all across the district, even surpassing state improvement gains. Test scores are always the last standard that shows improvement, but we are doing just that here in Metro schools for all subgroups, for all students, not just those of a certain racial majority, or who speak English, or live in certain localities, or come from families of means. My colleagues and I were elected to ensure an education for all students attending Metro schools. I dare say that living in Nashville for over 20 years and educating our three children in Metro schools gives me a certain advantage over someone serving at a state level and not knowing a community as intimately as my colleagues and I do. I will sum up my message with this statement. Let us, the Metro Nashville Board of Education, do our job. Let the locally elected representatives make our local decisions without Big Brother deciding what is best for us. Do not undermine our decisions. They were made with much more time, thought, and information than you had when you made yours. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Kendall?
I choose to speak today in opposition to this motion.
Use your mic, please.
I choose to speak tonight in opposition of this motion. If we approve this, it has very long-reaching impact. It is very troubling to me that nearly 60 years after the Brown versus Topeka Board of Education decision, we're still having the debate concerning desegregation and diversity in Nashville public schools. Although the Supreme Court decision called for desegregation with all deliberate speed, the Nashville school system barely moved in that direction for nearly 17 years. In 1971, Judge L. Cleo Martin, using the Swan decision, ordered the first crosstown busing as a remedy to ensure desegregation of Nashville public schools. The following year, nearly 30,000 children were removed from Nashville public schools by their parents. Obviously, these parents didn't leave the system because the quality of education had suddenly declined. In 1982, another ruling by Judge Tom Wiseman created what was known as the Agreement in Principle, which was an expansion of the prior busing plan further into the suburban communities. In 1985, when I was appointed to the board to fill out a term, the whole issue of diversity in neighborhood schools was and has continued to be a compelling topic. In 1998, the school system was released from the federal court supervision based upon a new agreement called the School Improvement Plan. This plan was not exactly a neighborhood school plan, but as close as we could come without negatively impacting the desegregation and diversity that we had worked so hard to achieve. In 2008, the board adopted a new rezoning plan. Along with three other African-American board members, I opposed portions of the plan because of its potential segregative impact. However, the plan was adopted and put into effect. After an extended legal battle, the federal court judge Kevin Sharp recently ruled that while the intent to segregate was not proven, the zoning plan did in fact have a segregative effect. Ladies and gentlemen, when Dr. Garcia stated that he would not be the superintendent to help resegregate schools, he was not having, he was not hallucinating. Today, we are faced with another proposal that if it is approved as stands without adequate transportation, can and will create a segregated paradigm that will make the rezoning plan look like child's play. If approved in its present form, it opens the floodgate for an unlimited number of racially and economically isolated charter schools throughout Nashville. The Great Hearts application is for all practical purposes, void of any meaningful transportation outside of its immediate location, especially for disadvantaged families, who often make choices based upon the availability of transportation. The organization is consciously and purposely limiting transportation with full knowledge that this will create a nearly all-white and affluent school in the Western Nashville area. The Great Hearts organization, along with support from so many affluent and politically powerful people, certainly has the capacity to provide this needed transportation. But rather than explaining why they refuse to do so, the applicant attempts to justify, justify why they should not have to do so. I, I say to them, don't use money to stack boards, use it to line up buses. But establishing a group of racially and socio-economically isolated schools, so-called locational diversity, is not acceptable. If we adopt this theory of diversity, as having schools for blacks, for Hispanics, for whites, or another for poor students of all races in different parts of the city, then Nashville, Memphis, Birmingham, Montgomery, and many other southern cities already had diversity prior to the Brown decision. Great Hearts history in Phoenix clearly demonstrates this scenario. Only one school out of 12 or 15 has a black population that exceeds 10%. The one school, Telios Preparatory Academy, has nearly 80% poor and black and is faring much poorer academically than its counterparts. Although application does not identify a specific location, Great Hearts proclaims the White Bridge Road in Charlotte Pike to be a very diverse area. I rode through that today to the north. To the north, there's Brilet Parkway and Little More. To the west is the Westmead and Hillwood community, which I think you heard a lady here talk about the value of the homes and the people who live there. To the south, there's basically all commercial all the way to West End. When you go beyond that, you have very affluent neighborhoods. To the east, you have some socioeconomic diversity, but very, very little racial diversity. At any rate, nearly all of the disadvantaged population is located outside of the walking distance based upon MNPS guidelines, which is one and a quarter mile, one and a half mile, et cetera, for different grade levels. And yet, no transportation is proposed in the Great Hearts application for these students outside of this area. Great Hearts argues that it mirrors or surpasses Metro's diversity standards. I think I heard a gentleman here tonight say that. Apparently, Dr. Nixon with the state and the State Board have bought this argument without very much investigation. Dr. Nixon chose not to compare Great Hearts to other charters at all, all of whom provide transportation wherever a child resides, all of our other charters. He chose to compare the Great Hearts transportation plan to other schools of choice such as magnet. He clearly states in his recommendation to the State Board that MNPS does not provide transportation to parents who choose to send their children to schools other than their zone schools. Nothing could be further from the truth. The facts are, all magnet school students qualifying for free and reduced meals are provided MTA bus passes to magnet schools. These same services go even beyond just magnet schools and include specialty schools such as Academy at Old Cockle, Academy at Hickory Hollow, Big Picture, Middle College, Academy at Opera Mills, and Nashville School of the Arts. Further, MNPS provides transportation to approximately 2,500 students with disabilities on the yellow bus. Other schools that MNPS provides MTA bus passes for disadvantaged students who live out of zone include Carter Lawrence, Robert Churchwell, Hattie Cotton, Hull Jackson, Joan Padell, Bailey, Cresswell, John Early, Haynes, Rose Park, and Pearl Corn. Actual yellow bus transportation is provided to students choosing choice out of the Metro Center area to Hillwood, Bellevue, Gow, Harpitt Valley, Hickman, and even in other parts to Julia Green and Glendale. There are also schools that have choice options to a paired school. These schools also have choice transportation available. They are Baleshaw, Amqui, Brick Church Middle, Madison, Chadwell, Amqui, Graymar, Brick Church, Maplewood, Hunter's Lane, Jolton Elementary, Alex Green, Brick Church Middle, Jolton Middle, Alex Green, Old Center, and White's Creek and Hunter Lane. The overarching fact is that MNPS provides transportation to nearly all students on free and reduced meal to some school of choice. At the public hearing before Dr. Nixon, a Great Hearts spokesman stated that there were no charter schools in the West Nashville area. In fact, Lead Academy operates a middle school at the old Brookmead building in the very heart of West Nashville. A very telling story is that the school continues to remain nearly 90% African-American and nearly 90% free and reduced lunch. Although it is located within walking distance to many white and affluent families who can now apply, none have done so. The first answer that comes to your mind is probably the correct one. One of my colleagues recently expressed that Great Hearts and the Lead schools have different missions. My response is, oh, really? What are these two different missions? I thought the missions of both were to educate children wherever they come from. My fellow Board members, our previous denials were based upon a very thorough analysis of the Great Hearts application by the very people that we employ to give us good advice, our staff. From what I can see, nothing has changed since our last vote. The State Board, after meeting only 18 minutes, using erroneous information from Dr. Nixon, has instructed us to approve this application contingent upon certain conditions. When in actuality, what we do when we approve it tonight, we are entering into a contract with blank conditions. I hear the contract saying that, okay, we won't sign it until these things are done. My question is, why are we even approving it? They are talking about opening in the year 2014. I can't see the urgency of this Board approving it tonight, and we're talking about two years off. Why don't they bring back these conditional changes and show us? From what I heard tonight from the gentleman from Great Hearts, he's pretty much saying that the state has already said they're in compliance with the transportation part of it, when he compared, when he said that they were either as good or better than Metro, which I've just given you the information, which counters that. I can only conclude that the urgency of the vote at this meeting is a result of political bullying and strong-arm tactics. If the State Board is convinced that this is the right thing for the future of our schools and all of its children, then they should take the responsibility and own the consequences. I want to read that one more time. If the State Board is convinced that this is the right thing for the future of our schools and all of our children, then they should take the responsibility and own the consequences. This great city can be a flagship by proactively maintaining and promoting diversity in all of our schools, or we can be the model for developing tools to destroy it. Some of my friends ask me why I keep opposing this proposal. They say it's a done deal. The powers to be have spoken. I remind them of a quote made by a famous Negro man nearly 150 years ago, Frederick Douglass, when he says, "Find out what any people will quietly submit to, and you have the exact measure of the injustice and wrong which will be imposed upon them." A renowned social psychologist once said, and I paraphrase, "Morality does not come from rules and laws, but rather rules and laws flow from morality." I urge you, my colleagues, to vote to deny this. I see no changes in what was before us, than what's before us now. The new Board has the opportunity that if Great Hearts brings back a realistic transportation plan, which they haven't, then they can approve it. And I have no problem with that. Because my concern is that if we don't have adequate transportation for disadvantaged youth around this city, we're going to have racially and socioeconomically isolated schools. What's to prevent Great Hearts or any other charter next year from having an application to put one near Harpitt Valley, or near Percy Priest, or near Julia Green, or somewhere in the far hinterland of the McGavick Cluster, or the Madison area? If we approve this form of transportation, and that's what we're doing, because the state is already defined for us what proper transportation is in Dr. Nixon's statement, and the gentleman here tonight verified that. And they say, we've done that. We don't have to change that. We can still send one bus to North Nashville, make one stop. If there are children there, we'll pick them up. That's what they're saying. Ladies and gentlemen, if we vote on this, then we're denying our own convictions, our own definition of what we believe in this city to be diversity, that we've worked hard to do. I don't know what the consequences are if we say no, but I'm for one, would not be bullied into voting yes on this application.
Mr. Noron.
Ms. Shepherd and Mr. Kendall are exactly right. Let's talk about it. There's been concern that charter schools have sort of been heading toward developing two distinct charter school systems. One just for poor kids and one for wealthy kids. That is, one designed for isolating minorities and one designed for government-funded white flight, and that is troubling. And with the new legislation, the school system and the Board recognized that possibility. And we expressly and specifically demanded a diversity aspect of the charter application. Now, it takes effort and thought to develop such a plan, believe me, I know. And it takes effort and thought to implement it. And we hoped that Great Hearts would recognize that great benefit of different perspectives, different backgrounds in the classroom, that great benefit of diversity. And we hope to see some effort to develop such a plan, and we got just the opposite. In fact, they scoffed at our concerns. Their plan basically was, we'll have five schools and one will be for poor kids. That's a bad plan. So, we rejected their application, you know, really for three reasons. One, their application said that their model would not work in states where employing licensed teachers were required, like Tennessee. That's a pretty good reason to deny the application, and we did. Two, they said they needed five schools in the application cycle. Law doesn't allow for that. That's a pretty good reason to deny the application, and we did. Third, their plan for diversity was less than inadequate, as I've described. Now, according to the letter we received from the State Board, the state agreed with those three concerns. In fact, they required us to include those contingencies in any approval. Now, if Great Hearts does those three things, they've done what we've asked. It's what we've wanted all along. But they have really steadfastly refused to do so. And some of the statements tonight did not encourage me to think that it was going to change. The idea that, like the lawyer said, that the plan is sufficient now, and the state thinks so, can be right. That can't be right, or there wouldn't be contingencies. They would have just overturned our denial. They gave the contingency to require a diversity plan. Now, if they do that, if they come up with a plan that actually does mirror the efforts we make toward diversity in choice schools, that's a different thing. But we haven't seen that yet. And those efforts are comprehensive, and as Mr. Kendall outlined, some of them. So, here's what I need, need help on, Mr. Coverstone, and in this discussion. What is the likelihood that if this motion passes, which includes these three contingencies, that we've been basically ordered to include, and ordered, really instructed, to approve with these contingencies? If that motion passes and those contingencies are part of the approval, will their diversity plan be what they've already offered? Because it seems like that. Or will it really include, mirror our choice schools? I mean, and if they don't? So far, when we've asked that, the response has been to go to the state. And the state has now ordered us to, I know I'm sort of going in the circle, the state has now ordered us to require what we've already asked them to do, and so their next step will either be to do it, or to go back to the state and use the same, I guess, political pressure and other to say it's enough when it's, you know, what would happen?
Well, I think I'd have to bet on the next five World Series in order to answer that question, but I think the realistic answer is that the contingencies are a part of the contract and they'd have to be enforced. Now, this is exactly the same thing that the State Board asked us to do with regard to Drexel. And that was difficult. And I think you recall, there was a great deal of uncertainty about whether or not they met those conditions. In fact, there was a lot of opposition.
And on Drexel, the primary concern from the school system, and I guess from the Board, was that Drexel wasn't ready to open a charter school. The state reversed us and told us to approve them, and I think it is clear that we were right. At the time, they were not ready to open a charter school. Right? Okay, you don't have to, we were right. Thank you. Now, we are in a different situation, but in the same situation.
Well, it's the same situation in that it's the same contingencies we delivered to the State Board, were accepted, delivered back, and put into the contract, and then we had to go through the process of analyzing and really having this Board decide whether or not they had crossed the threshold of meeting those conditions, and it would follow the same process.
Is that, I mean, is that, is that a real thing, or is that going to be going through the motions?
Well, I think that depends on the Board and how it decides to deal with that when that question arises. You know, far be it from us to ascribe what the next action of someone else would be. You know, contrary to popular belief, we have followed the process that we have written, and the state law instructs us to follow every step of the way. And at this juncture, this is the next step in that process. And regardless of our case, or regardless of our opinions, the State Board has now handed us this directive, and we are instructed to enter into a contract, to grant a charter, and it says at the next board meeting, with those contingencies in place. Our recourse would be to revoke the charter if those conditions are not met.
And what if we don't? What if we deny their application?
Well, you know, again, that's the next step in the process, is that the State Board has the authority to deliver us this directive, and we are expected to comply. Beyond that, you know, I think my job here is to tell you what the process is and recommend that we take that step in the process.
Mr. Kendall?
Madam Chairman, I have no problem with the state's recommendation, but they went further to tell us, in essence, what our diversity is. When they said, when Dr. Nixon, in his recommendation to the Board, pretty much said that Great Hearts has already complied with the transportation, that they even go further than we do, then if it goes back, if it goes back to the state a year from now, and Great Hearts has done no more than what they have in this proposal, I don't think his position will change, and I don't think the State Board's position will change, because they've already said to us, you know, yeah- Because they've already said to us, you know, yeah, okay, they need to comply with diversity, but here's what diversity is. So, that's like, here's a contention here, I mean, a condition. But we're going to tell you what the condition is, and basically it tells you have already complied. So you don't have to do anything. And this board can't revoke you, because they've already told us that you're in compliance prior to us approving. I mean, that's what I read here. And I read to you what Dr. Nixon said. I didn't make that up.
Ms. Baines?
Mr. Coverstone, just a couple of questions for clarity's sake. The contingencies that the state board has mandated, was that a part of the original application? Was that information requested in the original application? The diversity plan, the licensed teacher? All of these things were a part of the original application? And any organization who is going to apply for a charter application is very well aware of these three things, along with other requirements for the application? Is that correct?
Yes.
Have we, have we, in the history of approving or denying charter school applications, ever approved an application for a charter school two years down the road?
No. I mean, it's our interpretation of the law, as we wrote in our response, that the law requires the applications to be approved a year in advance. However, the state board of education, the state department of education, has interpreted that provision in the law to allow approval in a year, and deferring of opening a year counting as the first year on the 10 years of the contract. And so they're relying on that as the basis. So the charter would be effective now, but open in year nine to go.
I think, I think my concerns have been very well represented by my colleagues. I don't think I need to go into, basically, you know, rebuilding the will again. But my concern is that we have created what some other school districts consider a model for approving charter applications. And speaking with school board colleagues across the country, they are looking to us as their model. My concern with the recommendation of the state board is that if we are being looked at as the model for school board districts across the country, as the best practice for approving and reviewing charter applications, it is a bit concerning to me that our own state board of education does not believe that we are doing our jobs. I will leave it at that, and thank you for answering my questions.
Ms. Hayes?
I'm trying to, I guess, to ask a follow-up question, perhaps to Mr. Norris around, and certainly Mr. Kendall's, statements. The state recommended, well, required us to approve a charter with three conditions, and one of which was diversity that mirrors our choice schools. I believe that was the language that was used. Mr. Kendall discussed transportation options within our choice schools, some of which, frankly, I'm not totally clear on all the different transportation options that we offer. If our requirement from the state, and what we would have in a charter, is that their diversity program mirrors that of our choice schools, and our choice schools offer transportation, as Mr. Kendall outlined, would that not be a requirement for some sort of transportation? If you've stated that they, that we do it, that we're offering transportation?
But that it is some sort of transportation.
That mirrors what we do.
Why don't they bring it to us?
Again, my question is, is if we are approving a charter tonight, if the motion is to approve a charter tonight with a condition that Great Hearts diversity mirror what we do, and it's been stated that we provide transportation, is that not, in effect, a transportation plan? Of some sort. And I guess this is not a debate between you and I.
I know, but the question is to me, as I said earlier, it appears that the state has already said that that minimal transportation, that one bus, two buses, whatever it is, one stop, two stop, in the clusters, the state pretty much has said in their recommendation, Dr. Nixon, that that's satisfactory, that that does, in fact, mirror ours. It doesn't. I mean, what I gave you was information I got from Chris Webber.
Sure. Yeah. We had a discussion, I guess, the other night, when you were not here.
Would you speak into your mic?
We had an executive session the other night, and you were not in attendance. And we discussed the fact that there is a diversity.
I was here.
You weren't, no, you were here. So, we had asked for, some people were not here, I'm sorry. So we'd asked for, I'd asked for a copy of our diversity plan and how we promote diversity, and I referenced our MSAP application, and talked about things that we are doing to promote diversity within our thematic magnets. I haven't seen a copy of that plan, but if that is the, if that's the plan, if that's what we are doing, and what we've said to the federal government we're doing, is that not the same plan that we would deliver to Great Hearts and say, here is the plan, here's what we're doing, here is, and the greatest part is it leaves a significant amount of subjectivity to our administration to say, yes, Great Hearts, you have met our definition of diversity. If they don't, and maybe this is a legal point of clarification, if they come to Dr. Register or Mr. Coverstone, and there is a lack of confidence that their plan mirrors ours, can they open?
It would, as I said to Mr. Norris, it would rely on our ability to revoke the charter on the basis of breaching that component of the contract, which would be part of the motion and part of the contract as of now. And that is the same explanation precisely as the state board gave in its discussions. So it would be up to this board.
We have complete authority to revoke the charter before they even open if we are not satisfied with the plan, is what you've told me? Yeah, is that accurate?
Subject to the process of review relative to the revocation, yes.
Correct. So they could, they would submit to you a document that you could say, yes, this meets our definition, or doesn't. And you could make a recommendation to the next board to say they did or didn't. You could come in and say, you know what, the plan that they have submitted does not meet our definition.
And the state's.
Gentlemen, you need to refer your questions either to Mr. Coverstone or to Dr. Register, not to each other, please. And Mr. Norris, have you finished, Ms. Hayes?
Well, I guess there's been some banter here, but I, my hope, and I have a long, pre-prepared statement that discusses, I concur with your concern.
Not to Mr. Kendall, to the entire board.
To the entire board. I certainly concur with belief and statements around the need for diversity. I am greatly intrigued by, locational diversity is a difficult word. You can use the word location in many different ways. When I look at a one-mile or one-and-a-half-mile radius around, and that's a walk zone, around White Bridge Road in Charlotte, and particularly a piece of property they've identified, both the socioeconomic and racial diversity is among the greatest in our county. We look at some of the magnet schools that we've opened. The thematic magnet schools that we've opened are in incredibly racially isolated neighborhoods by housing patterns. I'm interested to see their plan. I'm certainly interested and hope that they aspire to do better than we have done, and can bring a plan to us, to Mr. Coverstone, that he can recommend, so that if we're not satisfied with it, we can approve it. I think it's an incredibly slippery slope for us this evening if we do not pass this with one of our largest funding sources, who has ordered us, given us a directive to pass, that we don't. I would encourage you to follow what the state has recommended. I would hope that Great Hearts brings a plan that not only mirrors ours, but certainly exceeds ours. And if they don't, it's incumbent upon us to revoke it before they open.
Mr. Norris, and then Mr. Kendall.
All right, let's talk about diversity plans as part of the choice schools that we have. Most of the choice schools were created, some by the order in the 80s, to promote diversity, the magnet schools. And the idea was, you put a school in a high-poverty area, predominantly African-American area, and you have enhanced options, enhanced program, academic magnet, et cetera, that draws students from other areas to that high-poverty area. And the idea is, students who live nearby will go, and students from outside that high-poverty area will also go, and it will create a diversity. It has worked really well in some schools, and less so in others with regard to diversity. Now, the schools like Rose Park, East, Haynes, Head, Meggs, MLK, Hume Fogg, even National School of the Arts, are that type of diversity plan for choice schools. The six recent magnet schools from the federal grant are the same way. The idea is, you put a special program in a high-poverty area, and that attracts, and those have zone populations too, so the students nearby will go, and it helps attract and build diversity. That's part of the plan. Now, we also have choice schools, and Mr. Kendall talked about, in the Hillwood Cluster. And they are utilized for diversity as well, the choice plan, which includes school bus, really door-to-door transportation, from areas that were designated in the 1998 agreement to attend schools in the Hillwood Cluster. Those now have the choice with transportation. Transportation's an important part of that, from areas that are high-poverty to schools in the Hillwood Cluster. That's part of the choice school's diversity plan. It is more than, we'll put our school in a certain location. It is, it includes transportation, it includes the location of the school. But it is comprehensive, and I haven't seen a real appreciation for developing that plan, even giving it a try to develop a plan. And that is, that's what concerns me. On the other hand, and this is going to be the last thing I think I say, this is my last meeting, and there's only going to be, you know, you only have to put up with me a little bit longer. And I don't want to saddle the next board with ill feelings from the state. And so I am cautious to just make the state board and the state department angry in my last meeting. Yeah, I don't know, a year ago, maybe I would, it's no problem. But, but, you know, I don't want, you know, Jill Spearing to be punished for taking a stand. On the other hand, my conscience says I need to take a stand.
Take a stand.
Take a stand.
Right? Now, but there will be, you know, the price for my stand will be paid by another board member.
We'll handle that.
And I have to, and that's, and that's a serious concern. So, anyway, that's my.
Mr. Gentry?
So, a couple of interesting things that have been said here about the diversity in the White Bridge Road area. I just want to make sure we're not confusing Mexican restaurants, Thai restaurants, soul food restaurants, and the Church's Fried Chicken, all in a block of one another as diversity. So, I mean, I think that we had a good tour of the White Bridge Road area. It's not that diverse with regards to the people who live there. The other thing is, you know, the beauty of having an elected nine-person board is that we don't all have to agree. We don't all have to come to a consensus about what our vote is going to be. The one thing I don't think we should forget is that we all, actually the people at this table, got together and we created a mission and a vision for Nashville Public Schools. And that, we decided, when we did that, that that would be the document that would serve as our guiding principles for the decisions that we made on behalf of the students and parents of Metro Nashville Public Schools. And at the end of the day, that's the only question that each of us as individuals need to ask ourselves with regards to the decision that our individual votes about this Great Hearts application, is as the application as it stands, the information that we have been presented, all of the things that have taken place, does it speak to an organization that's coming into this district that buys into the mission and vision of Metro Nashville Public Schools? Because as I continue to say and remind people, at the end of the day, a charter school is a public school. That if we're going to be the authorizers of, we have to stay true to the mission and vision that we created for the schools, the students, and the parents of this district. The challenge, I think, is part of it has been the circular logic that has been highlighted around the definition of diversity as we view it, and as we articulate it as a district, what the state has said our diversity is. And it's sort of like, we say diversity should be magenta, they say, well, the application has diversity that's yellow, diversity should be yellow. So, if you approve it one way or the other, we're going to come back to what we believe diversity should look like in your district, a diversity plan should look like for your district. The second challenge you have is that if we go forward and authorize it with these contingencies, parents are going to start making decisions based on the expectation that there's going to be a school in that area run by Great Hearts Academy. And if we, as a board, come back and decide, which I would assume if we did go forward and approve this, we'd have to put some significant timelines on when that plan comes back, when we vote again, and all those other things. But if we do, we also, again, introduce a tentative choice into our portfolio that may not come to fruition. So I don't think that we should kind of play around with this as a guessing game and as a what-if. We've never done that before. We've been very clear about what the expectations are for charter schools that come into this district. We have been very consistent, as we were with this application, in evaluating those applications. And I think it's, we just, again, need to be consistent and true to what we have articulated as the mission and vision for this district.
Mr. Kendall?
Yeah. Well, first of all, I would say, Sharon, if you keep talking like that, you're going to be my good board member, my district. But I think we have to be honest here. You know, when I mentioned early about 30,000 children leaving this system after a decision to have crosstown busing, that happened in 1971. And they left this system, they were mostly white, probably all, because they didn't want to go to school in a desegregated school system. They weren't being bused into the inner city, most of them, it was kids being bused out there. But, so we have to be honest, the discussion since I've been on the board, there's been a continuous discussion of how do we get these parents back into the school system? How do we keep them from going to private schools? And one of the solutions, it appears, that somebody has come up with, if we can open schools in those areas and not have... schools in those areas and not have a large diversity of poor children, black children, then they'll come back in the system. I think somebody has figured that out. The example I gave a few moments ago about Lead Academy being at Brookmead, and I said, close your eyes, and I think you'll come up with the right answer. Nobody can tell me, sitting here, why here's a charter school, sitting in the heart of West Nashville, only probably about a mile and a half from where Great Hearts is talking about locating, right off the interstate, in a building that was at one time one of the most popular schools in this city, by both black and white parents. Nobody can explain to me why parents who live in that area don't want to go to that school now. But I can explain to you why. Because they are 90% African-American, 90% poor kids there. It's not because Lead Academy is any, is not a good charter school. Matter of fact, we have lauded Lead Academy in this city as being one of our best charter schools. We know their history. We don't know the history necessarily in Nashville of Great Hearts. But nobody can tell me why parents, affluent parents who live in that area, would not choose that school. I think that speaks for itself. The other issue that I want to address is, Sharon was saying, why are we playing this guessing game? You know, in the Renaissance period, people used to sit around in coffee shops and argue about how many teeth a horse had. And somebody said, go out and count them, which made sense. Why doesn't Great Hearts come to us and say, here is what our diversity plan is now? I'm talking about now. I'm not talking about approving you and then you come back next year. No, I'm not asking a question. I'm just saying, why doesn't that happen? Why are we sitting here debating approving something that we have continually asked for? Mr. Coverstone, and the administration has continually asked for this. It has not been provided. The state turned around and approves it with the continued, but tells us what is acceptable. Now, we're talking about denying? We can't even deny you. How are we going to revoke you? You think about what I'm saying. We can't even deny this application because the state turns around and says, no, you're not going to deny it, you're going to approve it. You try to revoke it, they say, oh, we've already told you what diversity is. And the politicians, and the millionaires, and all starts putting pressure on the State Board of Education, and we're back in the same posture.
No, sir, this is not public participation, this is a board meeting, and public participation is the first meeting of the month. So, you will not be able to speak at this time.
Yes, Ms. Hayes.
Mr. Kendall did have a question. He said no one could tell him why parents haven't chosen Brookmead who live in the immediate area. I think I can address that. It was illegal under state law that authorized charters.
It's not this year, and none have applied this year.
It's not this year.
It is legal.
It is legal this year, and I do believe that we-
Ms. Hayes, just address your response or your comments to the board, not Mr. Kendall. Mr. Kendall, this is to be addressed to the board, to Mr. Coverstone, or Dr. Register, or the board, not to each other.
Sure. You know, Mr. Kendall made a statement that no one could tell him why, and I'd be delighted to address it to the board and certainly to the news media, that state law did not prohibit it. I don't know, off the top of my head, if anybody did apply. What I do know is that diversity is something that lead values. Diversity, they've talked about it in newsletters. They were prohibited from recruiting the people that live in their neighborhood. I believe that they're bringing on an incredibly popular teacher within the district, Mary Catherine Bratchell, is a specific, specific goal to begin to recruit those parents. She was revered in the Hillsborough Cluster.
Ms. Hayes, if you don't mind, please, I'd rather us not reference individuals as far as what this topic is about tonight, and it is on Great Hearts, not Ms. Bratchell or any other employee of the charter school or the district. So, we must stay on the topic, and that is, Mr. North's motion can be directed to Mr. Coverstone, again, to Dr. Register, or to the board, if you don't mind. Thank you. Have you finished your comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Hayes? Okay, Ms. Shepherd.
Mr. Coverstone, to Dr. Gentry's point about the expectation that the school will be there if we do indeed do approve this, what can we expect as far as a timeline for those three criteria to prove that those have been met?
Well, you know, I think that on the, you know, two of them, you know, they'll either be met or they won't down the road, and that'll be fairly straightforward in terms of the diversity plan. You know, I suppose you could instruct us to, you know, make a recommendation, make a review of the plan by a certain point. At the point when the school goes through the recruitment process and opens, or before it opens, when it has identified students, you could determine the effects of that plan. But, you know, there's no definite timeline on that unless you ask for a timeline. Again, the board, the state board, has sent specific instructions to grant the charter, and to grant that with those contingencies attached, not to wait to grant the charter until a date in the future.
So, reasonably, then this could go on until they open the doors, and then we would revoke it?
Well, yeah, you know, I mean, that's, yes, that's the nature of how it would work. I mean, that's exactly the same path we followed with Drexel and went through that halfway through this year. So, I think it comes to the plan and what the plan would be, and whether or not the plan mirrors the things that have been identified.
Just one quick comment. So, basically, what we're doing is putting our children in jeopardy. And that, I'll say this, when I decided to run for the school board position, I did it because I care about what happens to the children in Metro Nashville Public Schools. It wasn't for any other reason. And to put these children in jeopardy, to play this political tug-of-war with these children and their education really concerns me. We have to make a decision based on the information that we have in front of us. Again, based on the questions that you answered for me earlier tonight, Great Hearts was very well aware of what was included in that charter application, what the requirements were. They did not comply. They had an opportunity to resubmit that application, they did not comply. So, the next step was to request an appeal by the State Board of Education, still not in compliance of the initial requests. So, now we are at a point where the State Board of Education has mandated to this board of education that we approve this application based on these contingencies that Great Hearts was aware of at the very beginning of this application process. Is, am I correct in that?
Well, that's correct, but that's how, that is how that process works, and that's what they're asking us to do.
And it's unfortunate. It's unfortunate that, based on so many, so much wrangling back and forth, that we have children that are being tossed around like beanbags in the process. As Dr. Gentry stated, we have parents who are sitting in this audience and listening to this school board meeting right now, who are hoping that this charter application is approved tonight. They will start making plans for those children to go to this charter school in two years. And the two-year time period between today and the time that that school opens, there's a very real possibility that that charter could be revoked. And then where do these parents go? What do these parents do? Are we going to have another issue with the children? And, I'll stop while I'm ahead. Thank you.
Call for the question.
Call for the question, please. We have one more comment from our attorney.
I just want you to understand that charter schools, this whole scheme, was developed by the General Assembly for a process of applications, amending those applications, and an appeal to the State Board of Education. The law says that the State Board of Ed can do what it did, and there is no appeal. And the State Board has added these contingencies, and according to the law passed by the General Assembly, this board needs to approve the charter with these contingencies.
Why did they send it back to us?
Or else what?
Because that is the scheme in this statute.
It is the scheme.
Or else what? Or else-
Not among each other.
Or else we're fined, we-
Put in jail?
No, there's no sanction set out, Mr. North. There's no sanction, but it's clear that there is no appeal.
Right, they approved the charter without the board.
No.
They, I mean, what?
The law says, "The State Board shall remand the decision to the local Board of Education with instructions for approval of the charter." And there is no appeal by this board to any other level.
So, Ms. Johnson, you're saying that this board has no other options? The board itself does not have any options at all?
Not under the current statutory scheme, no.
So, what happens? As Mr. North said, we have retaliatory kinds of things against the next board?
There's no sanctions of the board set out here. The State Board of Ed has various powers over this school system. They're not, there's no sanction set out in this scheme here.
So, you're saying to us, Ms. Johnson, that if we do not approve this request by the state tonight, and it goes back to the state, then what?
I don't know that it does go back to the state.
Well, I mean, wherever it goes, it's going somewhere.
I suppose that Great Hearts could go to court and request an order from a court with jurisdiction to order you to do so, to follow the state law.
That's what I wanted to guess. That's what I wanted.
Now, if-
North.
We're also instructed to do it at the next meeting.
That's what he says in his letter. Now, there's no provision for that in the statute. Though, well, it could be considered part of the instructions.
Move we defer.
A second.
You got to defer a certain date, though. You got to defer 30 days or whatever.
You have a motion.
Well, we have a motion on the floor first.
Let me just go through this one more time.
The question has been called.
Okay.
The question has been called.
Oh, even though Madam Chairman, you know, the question has been called-
The question's been called.
You can ask, you can still have a substitute motion presented, as long as it hadn't been voted on. And if you want, I got a robust rule.
Do we have a substitute motion?
I will make a substitute motion to defer it for 30 days to ask Great Hearts to present their diversity plan to the administration. I need a second.
Are you including all three contingencies?
Right, all three contingencies.
Now, would you restate your motion for clarity, Ms. Kendall?
That Great Hearts present to the board a detail of remitting all three conditions that are being required by the state in their order to us, instructions to us.
Okay. Now, we have a second for the amendment. All in favor?
Wait, discussion. Hold on. Let's, yeah, discussion. Let's be sure our procedure is okay. There was a motion and a second and discussion.
Yes.
There was a call for the question, but no vote on ending-
Well, you-
Inhalting discussion.
Right. If you want, there should, after the call for the question, it's not automatic, we have to vote on the call for the question. If we deny call for the question, it's back open again.
There was not a vote for the call for the question, right?
There was not a vote on the question, so let's back up and vote.
Supermajority to-
Ms. Hayes, excuse me. Mr. Parliamentary, would you please restate?
Okay. What you might need to do at this point in time, if Madam Chairman, is go ahead and call for, there was a call for the question.
There was a call for the question.
You need to have a vote on the call for the question. If that's denied, then it's back open for discussion as it was before.
Okay.
So, if you want to take a vote on the call.
So, let's have a vote on the question? All in favor?
On whether to call the question.
On whether to call the question?
So, a vote for yes stops discussion.
No.
Is that right?
That's right.
All in favor of the question? Let it be known by saying aye.
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 Two ayes? Seven noes?
Well, just take the vote.
Call for the other motion.
No.
Yeah.
Did you get a vote?
All opposed to calling the question.
All opposed to calling the question.
Please let it be.
Please let it be known by saying no. No.
That is the majority.
Now, I want to introduce a substitute motion to defer the matter for an indefinite period until Great Hearts presents, satisfies those three conditions with the Board of Education, Metro Board of Education. And when I say indefinite, that's, a deferral has to be indefinite.
Okay, do we have a second on the substitute motion?
Second.
We have a second. Question?
No, I just want to say, we are breaking the law by doing this. I just think that this would be fully understood. We have been asked, we have been told by the Board of Education that at the next meeting, we should adopt this. And, you know, I think that the board has to be cognizant that they are purposely saying no to the State Board of Education, and this is a dictate from the legislature.
I'm going to ask for clarification from Ms. Johnson, please.
The statute as it's written gives the State Board of Education the authority to tell you to approve this charter. They've given you instructions, as the state law allows them to do. And those instructions include those three contingencies, and to approve this at your next meeting. This is your next meeting.
Now, the letter, again, you said the letter says in the next meeting-
The letter says-
The order or recommendation doesn't necessarily say that. I think that's what you said earlier. Or is the letter the order?
I think taking it up today, which is your next meeting, is part of the instructions from the State Board. There's that instruction plus the three contingencies.
But, Ms. Johnson-
And I believe they have the authority to do that.
But the instruction says with the contingency, at the next meeting, vote with the contingency. If the contingency has not been fulfilled, then we don't have to vote, correct?
The charter agreement, which will be crafted from now, after you approve the charter-
It said approval with the contingency, if the contingencies are satisfied. That's what it says. It doesn't say contingencies that will be satisfied at a later date, does it?
To approve a charter to have, to meet these three contingencies.
If, I think it says if they meet.
No.
Read the actual letter.
That's the fine.
On January 27, 2012, the board voted to remand the decision to deny Great Hearts Academy's charter school application back to Metro Nashville Public Education, Board of Public Education, with instructions to approve the amended applications at their next regularly scheduled board meeting contingent upon the following. And then it gives the next, the three contingencies.
Contingent upon?
And that was the original, that was the original motion.
Well, what does contingent upon mean to you? Contingent upon doing something. I'm going to prove it contingent upon you doing this, not contingent on you doing this at a later date.
That the charter you are approving tonight will have these three provisions. And that's what I understood the original motion to be.
And when is a quorum established? And when is a quorum established? If it can, if there's a quorum here, which there is, and does that mean that there is a quorum present throughout the meeting, even if everyone leaves?
You have to have a quorum to take any vote. Whoops.
We need to have a quorum present to take a vote? Or is a quorum established at the beginning of the meeting so that there's a quorum that lasts the rest of the... So, if seven of us leave, there's not a quorum to take a vote? Is that still breaking the, in your opinion, still the same situation as...
I think you're not following, you would not be following the instructions of the State Board of Education.
Ms. Johnson, I still have trouble with the language contingent upon. My brother's sitting out there, and I rode here the night with him. And I said, "I'm going to ride home with you contingent upon you having some gas in your car." I have a problem with that contingent upon. Does it mean we do it and then allow my brother to get some gas later? You know, I have a problem. I think that's a legal question.
Push the car to the left.
He pushed the car to the right.
You're going to be walking. I guess I'm puzzled with, we don't have a recourse, whichever way it goes. It seems to me, I mean, this is how I'm interpreting it. What is the recourse for this board? Or any board? And we, as well as the state legislators, are public officials. Voted into our positions by the general public. So, what recourse do we have? We have none at all. I mean, it seems to me that they're saying, you know, it does not matter what Metro Nashville, Davidson County voters think with all of us sitting around this table tonight. It's overlooking seemingly, it's just by design that there is no way, fashion or form, that we can say, "Hey, look, we see something a little bit different. We took longer than 18 minutes to get to this place." And I want to thank you, Ms. Johnson, for, you know, having to clarify all of this. But it seems to me that we're damned if to do and damned if we don't.
Let's be damned with our conditions.
I think the State Board had the authority to issue this decision. And you need to follow it. And if you don't, there's nothing...
Then what?
There's no sanction described in this statute.
So, no sanction will be placed on this board?
No, no, no.
Is that what you're saying?
No, that's not what I said. I said, "There's no articulated sanction here." It's not like a criminal statute where if you do X, you get this punishment. The punishment is not here. It's not described here. I would predict that Great Hearts would figure out what to do, which would be to take your decision back to a court that would have jurisdiction and have that court order you to do what the State Board of Education has done, has told you to do.
They do that with the contingencies explained and fulfilled or not? Not.
Not.
Ms. Shepherd.
Ms. Johnson, did you say that the law did not stipulate exact, the next school board meeting portion of our instructions?
Could you state that again? I'm sorry.
Earlier, you said that state law did not address the next school board meeting provision of the decision we were given.
I think that is part of the instructions.
But not part of the law.
Dictated by the State Board of Education. And the State Board, under the statute, has the authority to give you written instructions as to how to issue and approve this charter.
I mean, do they have written instructions to tell us to stand on one foot while we do it? Do they have written, you know, written instructions to, you know, do it at midnight?
Do it tomorrow.
Or tomorrow, or at the next, you know, or at the next meeting?
The term isn't defined, but I'm sure the board exercised their best judgment, just like you will.
And just like we already did.
Twice.
I understand that.
Ms. Johnson, I guess a further point of clarification. I believe you've outlined that if we vote against or we deny approval of the charter tonight, we may be breaking, or certainly would be breaking, state law.
You will not comply with the valid orders of the State Board of Education.
We would not? And is that breaking a law?
No.
So, the follow-up question I have to that is saying that their recourse is to file suit in a court of law. They certainly could, they could have an argument that, you know, any sort of a lawsuit first that they should be allowed to open, and we should require them to open. But the second piece is, they likely could also make a claim for damages?
Of course, the defense is contingent.
Ms. Hayes, Mr. Kendall? There's nothing here that describes that, but I would, I don't know what their damages would be. They could make that argument to a court of, probably in Chancery Court. Attorney's fees?
Attorney's fees, marketing costs, student recruitment.
There's no guarantee they will win.
Oh, absolutely not.
Gentlemen.
Thank you, Ms. Porter.
Do you have a...
I just wanted to know if we were opening ourselves up to a lawsuit that could have a damage claim?
I think you would, I think you could be opening yourselves up to a lawsuit that at the very least would have attorney's fees attached to it.
Dr. Gentry and then Mr. North?
At the risk of being slightly less entertaining. So, okay, we all finished at least some basic education here. And I think, at the end of the day, what everybody at this table understands is that there is an expectation that we will approve this application. And that's exactly what it says, that, and I think what Ms. Johnson is trying to share with us is the process, not a law, but the process that is outlined in state statute with regards to charter applications and when the State Board intervenes. And the process is, they tell the board what to do. The expectation is that the board will do what they told us to do. It's really cut and dry, pretty simple. So, I think it just comes down to one of two things. We either say, "No, we're not going to do it," or we do it in a way that we're comfortable. So, if we don't think we can come up with a way that we can do it and we're comfortable, and that goes back to being very specific on how we're going to manage those, manage monitoring those contingencies, so that we don't have families expecting something to happen, that we don't wait two years to go back and say, "Do you have licensed teachers? Do you have a diversity plan? Is it a month, biweekly, every board meeting up until X? Is it to say, 'There's no active marketing and soliciting of parents for a year until you have,' whatever it is?" I mean, so there are ways to do it where we manage and monitor the expectations. And, you know, to be honest, that is an option that we have. The question becomes, do we want to comply with the mandate and put in processes so that we don't find ourselves at the 11th hour in July of 2014 with a school that has a charter that we granted? Because that's the thing that's important here, is if we vote yes here, we have granted them a charter to start doing something with the expectation that they will address these three things prior to opening the doors. Our responsibility would be to be very vigilant in monitoring their delivery to our satisfaction. The thing that's very clear here is, we also have the ability to revoke it prior to the school opening. I think what we're voting against is the probably pretty realistic assumption that if we revoked it...
It'd be reversed.
It would be reversed. But I think, again, the question becomes, as a board, do we continue to exercise our rights and our responsibility with regards to approving charter schools? And there is, I mean, we have the bandwidth here at this table and well within our realm of operating to comply, but put in very stringent and specific reporting back to us about what we should do. Just to be clear, that that is an option.
Yes.
Dr. Gentry, I can agree with the monitoring process. I think the problem is, we first got, we first have to agree to what the parameters are. What is diversity? What are we talking about? If we have a disagreement on that from the start, there's no way we can really monitor whether they are complying.
Which comes back to the basic concern.
Mr. North?
Yeah, the understanding of what the diversity plan is.
Right, what it is from the start.
Dr. Register?
Yes, I've been listening, and I'd like to, I'd like to say some things based on what Dr. Gentry just said. Let me, let me begin by saying that I'll certainly speak into the mic.
Madam Chairman, I have no problem with Dr. Register speaking, but under Parliamentary rules, he should not be addressing the board, making recommendations to us at this point.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Parliamentary. Any other comments from anyone? We have, I'm sorry.
Was, was Dr. Gentry's comments a suggestion that we come up with specifics tonight before we vote? And, or with conditioned on that a committee of board members prepare specifics on the, on those conditions or just... Right?
We already have it. I mean, it goes back to what Ms. Mays has said. We have a process that works.
Right.
We just have to work the process.
Right, so, I mean, what's the, are we, did your comments lead to a supportive deferral? I need to, were Ms. Gentry's comments...
Thank you.
A recommendation for deferral or for, to approve that original motion with an understanding that specifics will come later?
We, keep in mind that we have a substitute motion.
We have a motion for deferral on the floor right now.
Right.
Yes.
With the conditions that they comply.
Right.
With what the board establishes as being those parameters for...
Which is tantamount to the same thing that I just said.
Which is tantamount to, so that motion's on the floor now.
Right, okay.
So, you either approve with the contingencies and put a process in to monitor their meeting of the contingencies before we get to the 11th hour, or we defer with the contingencies and put into place a process to monitor before the doors open at the 11th hour. Either way, it results in the same.
With that being said, we really need to go with the motion.
Call for the question.
Okay. Question's been called. Do we go back to the substitute motion, Mr. Kendall, I believe you made earlier?
Repeat that, please. What did you say?
The substitute motion. Will you please repeat your substitute motion?
Well, I think you first need, Madam Chairman, to have a vote on, on the call for the question. You know, all in favor of calling for the question?
Yes, but that's where we are, right?
Right, but we have a vote on that first before we go back to the...
All right, all in favor of the substitute motion or of the call for the question? Let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
Those oppose? Motion carries.
Now, you're back to the substitute motion.
Now, we're back to the substitute motion.
Right.
And, Mr. Kendall, would you restate your substitute motion?
The substitute motion is to defer indefinitely till such time as the Great Hearts have complied with the conditions that's set out by the state and its instructions to us.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second? Question?
Perhaps it should be addressed to Ms. Johnson or maybe Mr. Coverstone in executive session with Mr. Kegel last week.
Can't talk about that, sir.
No, we can't. We cannot. That was an executive session.
That's privileged to us.
Okay, in the Knoxville free times, it has been reported that a charter school has opened that did not have approval from the Knoxville Board. Does that ring a bell to anyone, to you, Mr. Coverstone, or anyone else on the board? That state law requires us to take action within 60 days, and if we do not deny or approve a charter, that the charter would automatically be approved. And I guess where I'm going with that question is an indefinite deferral. If we do not take an action, if it's indefinitely deferred and we do not vote up or down, the application, is that under state law? Does that grant them a charter without conditions?
No, that's the first step in the process. You have to act. You acted the first time. I don't think there's any basis for that subsequent in the process. I think that's not...
Do you know much about the Knoxville situation?
Enough to be dangerous, yes.
So, and that's what I guess I'd like to be really careful of, is that we don't fall into that trap, that we don't do that this evening, right? So, that taking an indefinite deferral, not taking an action to approve or deny the charter, which we're, I believe, required to do within a certain time period under state law, that an indefinite deferral and a vote doesn't put us in the same position that Knoxville is in today with a charter school that has opened without approval of their board, they're receiving funding, I believe they're required to receive funding, and if we don't take an action...
That's a, that is a different situation factually. And it is a different step in the process.
I just want to make sure that, I would have very real concern that, as we talk about litigation this evening, that if we were not to take an action and have an indefinite deferral, that we could fall into that, and they would be granted a charter without our approval without conditions.
I don't believe that's a risk, but as Ms. Johnson has said, I mean, I believe that going to court at that point for approval would be the next step. So, I, you know, I think it's a different situation that you're asking about.
You think?
No, I'm sure that that timeline is different.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. All right. We're ready for the vote. All in favor of Mr. Kendall's motion? Let it be known by saying aye? Or let's do a roll call. Gentry?
Yes.
Brannon?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Mays?
Yes.
North?
Yes.
Kendall?
Yes.
Hayes?
No.
Simmons?
No.
Porter?
Yes.
We have seven yess, two nos. Motion carries. Thank you for a healthy discussion. Since we have had such a lengthy discussion tonight, I'm going to ask Dr. Register if you don't mind just moving your report to the next board meeting?
Not at all.
And let's move on into announcements, because I do not have a report. So, therefore, we will move on into the announcements.
Madam Chair, this is, if I had the floor.
Yes.
This is not really an announcement, but I want to commend, publicly commend, the principals and staff at Churchwell and John Early. This past year, I understand, they've moved out of that category as being in the bottom 5 percent, and that's based upon, I'm sure, efforts of the existing staff last year and the principals. And I just want to make sure that we commend them and applaud them for this happening.
Thank you. Dr. Gentry, you have an announcement? What are you thinking about?
It's not really an announcement. We can... No?
Comment? Dr. Brandon?
No, ma'am. I just have one quick announcement. On August 22 and 9:00 a.m., we will have a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the Nashville State Tech Community College that is opening up at the old Hickory Hollow building. So, anybody who is available to come out, you are more than welcome.
Madam Chairman, while I have the mic, I want to publicly congratulate you, Sharon, for your win in this election. And you, from the comments you made tonight, I'm, I'll probably vote for you next time.
Mr. Hayes, did you have an announcement?
No.
Mr. Noah?
I, I have a long list of people to thank for, that have really helped, helped me during my five years of service on the school board, but I will skip that and just say, "Thank you." But I do want to give an Olympic update, an MNPS Olympic update. We had a, a, a Glen Cliff graduate, Felicia Grunter, I believe is her name, was the only American, right, women's basketball referee in London for the Olympic Games. And, and we are, we are certainly proud of her. Also, we have in London right now, Michael Murphy, who is a graduate of Pearl Cone, who is participating in the Paralympics. And both of his parents are employees of MNPS and we're mighty proud of him and we congratulate them. And finally, a Hillsborough graduate, Marynell Metters, who is the head coach of the Atlanta Storm and general manager of the Atlanta Storm, I believe, in the WNBA, was an assistant coach on the U.S. Women's Basketball Team, maybe the best basket, women's basketball team ever assembled. And she is a graduate of Hillsborough High School. We are proud of our, our Olympians.
And before we adjourn, Ms. Simmons, I just want to say thank you to my colleagues on this Board. You are a wonderful group to work with. And I don't take that lightly. I have learned so much from you. And as you move forward with the next Board, I hope they can say the same at the end of their tenure.